Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Lord Mayor.
I'm just going to get my glasses on and read my papers. Yeah, because I've got to get up again. Right, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've received apologies from councillors Ahard, Bell, Corbett, George Paterson, Sharon Paterson, Renton and Schofield.
Thank you. Does council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 7th of February 2018? Thank you. Official announcements: we have been notified of the sad death of Dick Robson, a former Labour councillor in Woolington Ward, from 1988 until 2004. On behalf of the council, I would like to offer condolences to his family. Funeral details have been circulated. I will now ask the council to stand for a minute's silence as a mark of respect. Thank you. As tonight's City Council meeting determines the budget on council tax, may I remind members that the guillotine will not be applied until 9pm this evening, rather than 8.30pm. Can I also remind members that the All-Party Parliamentary Group on Legal Aid is offering two training sessions on casework next Thursday, 15th of March 2018, here in the civic centre. You must book onto this to attend, and details have been previously emailed, or contact Member Services for the details. Also, there are a range of important online training courses for members to access, including data protection, health and safety and prevent. Can I take this opportunity, on behalf of the council, to offer congratulations to Dame Jackie Daniel, who has been appointed as Chief Executive of the Newcastle-Pontine Hospitals NHS Foundation Trust. Dame Jackie, currently Chief Executive of the University Hospitals of Morecambe-Bay NHS Foundation Trust, began her career as a nurse before moving into NHS management and has been a Chief Executive for the last 16 years. Before I continue, can I just offer my apologies, because you can probably hear I've got an awful sore throat, and I'm coughing a lot, and I'm sneezing a lot, so I hope you'll just bear with me when my voice goes and comes back again. Thank you. Petitions. Sorry, correspondence. Does council agree to receive the letters from the Chief Secretary to the Treasury and the Department of Works and Pensions? Petitions. We have received one petition this month. Can I call on councillor Pearson to present the petition?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I present a petition from the residents of Blakewall who live in or near Sunnyway. Two hundred and twenty people have signed the petition, which reads: 'We, the undersigned residents of Blakewall, living on or in the vicinity of Sunnyway, petition the City Council to undertake a road safety audit of Sunnyway and introduce additional traffic calming measures.' Thank you.
Sorry, can I now call on councillor Ainsley to respond?
Good morning, councillor Pearson. I present a petition to council. The road in question is already subject to a 20 mile per hour speed limit, and does have some traffic calming in the form of three build-outs, which reduces the road to a single carageway and necessitates vehicles giving way to each other. There have been five collisions reported to the police in the last five years, and none of these recorded excessive speed as a factor. However, it has been some time since we carried out a traffic survey in that area, so I've asked the Assistant Director for Transport to undertake a traffic survey on Sunnyway in the near future, and the results will inform what, if any, further speed restrictions are needed. But in the meantime, I would advise residents who have concerns about speeding to contact the police so that they can carry out investigation and enforcement of the current speed limits. But thank you councillor Pearson, we will get that survey underway. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ainsley. Public question time. There are no public questions or requests to address council were submitted this month. Reports referred from Cabinet: Newcastle 2020, investing in a fairer future; one-year-on 2018-19 budget. Can I call on leader of council to move the report, seconded by councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Once again, our council finds itself gathering in the face of austerity, to do what we can to limit its impact, to shield the vulnerable and to pair the city for the future. And we've seen since 2010, cut after cut passed on us by central government, with no regard for the impact. People have lost their jobs, and those who depend on the council have had to adjust to difficult situations. As a city, we've gone through several stages of austerity that bring us to where we are today. Firstly, there was the initial shock of the government's announcements, the coalition government's announcements, the sudden removal of grants, the in-year budgets that took away funding in the 2010-11 financial year, removing funding for day-to-day services. Then, we've been through a protracted period of restructuring and difficult conversations, I think it's fair to say, with residents, as we prepare for a future where we know that by 2020, virtually all government funding will disappear from the council. And now, Lord Mayor, comes a step which perhaps we didn't anticipate a few years ago, that of trying to be a council that shields residents from the full impact of austerity, but whilst at the same time preparing for a potential Brexit shock to come. And each of the years where we debated the budget in this chamber, we've hoped that the worst was finally upon us, that our libraries or our leisure centres or our street cleaning services have passed through the difficult times, and that we are now adjusted to a new reality. But each year, the financial situation gets worse, and we see another sign that the government's addiction to austerity isn't going away. This year, we know that at least one council is publicly close to financial failure, and that virtually every local authority in the country is now struggling to meet the demands with the weight of responsibility thrust upon us. In Newcastle, we've got two things in our favour: we've taken the sensible but difficult decisions that we need to get through, and we have a plan for the future, not just for the council but for the city too. We have not, and we will not bury our heads in the sand or pretend that there are easy answers or solutions, or give people false hope. But neither do we simply give up and throw our hands up in despair. Newcastle continues to be a growing city that creates jobs and builds homes, and is, through our great knowledge economy, supported by world-class universities and our college, at the very heart of the new economy of a modern Britain. And that track record, Lord Mayor, will serve us well, I think, for what we prepare for what is to come. The reality of the city situation means difficult decisions are unavoidable for anyone wishing to be both honest with residents and competent with their money. This budget acknowledges that council tax will have to go up, charges for services such as garden waste will increase, and we will see a reduction of more than £2 million from our care services budgets. We will lose another 40 of our dedicated staff, although once again, we promise that we will do everything we can to avoid compulsory redundancies. But our track record of sensible management of the city's finances means that we can step in when the city needs an extra hand. As councillor Kemp has already announced this week, we will be making £1 million available for a major clean-up of our streets and neighbourhoods in the run-up to the Great Exhibition of the North. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to showcase our city, not just to the rest of the North but to the world, and we are absolutely determined we're going to be ready to seize that opportunity when it comes. And that money comes from funds that we set aside for making our city cleaner and greener, and it means that we can do this work without hitting household bills or cutting other services, in response partly, I have to say, to the latest resident survey, in which 57% of people said that clean streets were the most important things in making neighbourhoods a good place to live. And one of our funds that have become available to us in the last couple of months means that we can do more for neighbourhood pride as well. The council invests, along with other local authorities, in Newcastle International Airport, and our investment there has given us a one-off dividend. And I believe it's residents who should benefit from that. It's a frequent complaint, certainly of letters that I receive, both from members of the public and from some members here, that many of our playgrounds are old and with broken equipment and need repair. It's a constant uphill struggle to keep them safe. We've seen them installed in a bit of a piecemeal way. Well, here's a great opportunity to invest one-off airport dividend funds in improving playgrounds right across the city. Where possible, we'll match that with Section 106 funds, money gathered from developers, to ensure that all 97 play areas are considered for investment and improvement. Families in Newcastle live in safe, friendly neighbourhoods, and we should do what we can to prevent government cuts putting those values at risk. When this council sees a return on its investment in the airport, we're proposing to use that wisely to support families and children. Some, and I see from the amendments before us tonight, there is a suggestion of this, some would suggest that we would use the money to play politics with jobs, to reverse a cut or to delay a decision for the sake of a gesture which simply delays the inevitable. And tonight, we have a clear choice: either to use the one-off airport dividend in such a way as to run away and hide from this year's difficult decisions, and to temporarily, only temporarily, attempt to reverse some of last year's difficult decisions, or to invest this one-off money for families and the places where they live and play. We cannot abuse the trust of residents when new money is found. We need to continue our programme of transforming this council so we're able to face the storms ahead. And this means, Lord Mayor, continuing with the pace of reforming our services. We're well on the way towards this. We're a city which still offers leisure and library facilities despite cut after cut after cut. And you can't look around our city centre without seeing a great north city at work. Stevenson Quarter transformed, Science Central going from strength to strength, Legal and General are delivering on a deal worth an initial £65 million investment, and construction of their first building started just last month. We're also a home to centres of national excellence, with construction work already underway for the National Innovation Centre for Aging, NIC A, and the National Innovation Centre for Smart Data, NIC D. I have to say, when I went to a meeting with the university, I introduced myself as NIC F, and they all looked a bit perplexed. But those two significant national centres will bring significant numbers of jobs. The data centre alone is expected to generate a further 1,000 jobs in the digital sector. Although to East Pilgrim Street, where the retail and entertainment offer for the city will expand as the demonstration work continues and new plans emerge, there's currently work going on on a pre-planning application for that part of the city centre. And that work will contribute greatly to the offer that we already have. We're proud of our unique and beautiful city centre, and are investing it to keep it a special place. In the Granger Market, for example, we're committed to keeping this gem in public hands, but putting money in to improve it by repairing the roof and asking experts in markets to come and help us to make it an even greater destination. But it's not just the city centre where we're seeing improvements. Across Newcastle, we're building the homes that families need in order to grow here and to live here. Last year, approximately 1,300 new homes were built across the city, the highest number of houses that have been built in this city for the last three decades. And as a sign of our commitment to ensuring that everyone has the chance to enjoy a good home, last year, the charity Shelter reported that Newcastle is outperforming other major cities in England when it comes to building affordable homes. And indeed, for those interested, The Guardian this week named Newcastle as the number-one English city for the proportion of affordable houses built in the last year. And our growth as a city is felt in our local economy too. We're very proud that we spend 49% of our procurement and commission spend of the budget in this city, in businesses and the voluntary sector, supporting jobs, and some 67% of the funds that we spend are spent within the region, playing a vital role in supporting our local economy. And I believe this is one of the highest rates of local economic return in investment of any local authority in the country, showing that we take our social value responsibilities very seriously. Now, these successes come from the hard work of many council officers, as well as the support of our communities. What doesn't contribute, Lord Mayor, to our success is current government policy. For years now, this council has been warning the government, both the coalition and then the Tories, that if they stick blindly to austerity, then councils will start to fail. Well, some are going over the cliff edge. What we were not expecting throughout those years of warnings is that the first council to go bust would be a Tory council. We've seen since 2010, two very similar governments, one supported by the party opposite, slash funds in a way which discriminates against northern authorities. And in Newcastle, we've lost since 2010 the equivalent of £268 per head of population. Across England, that average cut is £131 per head of population. So we've seen more than double the national cut here in Newcastle. And this means that some residents of the South, in particular, have yet to feel real austerity. Wokingham, and I'm sorry, I've got nothing against Wokingham as a place, I'm sure it's very lovely, but Wokingham has lost only £2 per head of population over the same period. £268 per head in Newcastle, £2 per head in Wokingham. How can anybody in government pretend that that is fair or equal or just? And earlier this year, we found out that it wasn't a similar magnitude, a smaller magnitude of cuts which were keeping southern councils afloat. They've been supporting their budgets through ever-increasing use of their reserves, putting off difficult decisions with a reckless disregard for their long-term future. Does anybody remember a former secretary of state saying that we should all do this? Northamptonshire County Council is the first council to become a case study of the risk of following Eric Pickles' advice. Officers there have issued a Section 114 notice, the first for several decades, in which all non-statutory spending is curtailed. The money in the bank is running out, and now justic cuts are having to be implemented, more or less overnight. Instead of leading their communities through a period of change, they are engulfed in a crisis, at least partly, of their own making. And, Lord Mayor, this is very significant, because within days of the announcement, Rob Whiteheadman, who's the Chief Executive of the Chartered Institute of Public Finance and Accountancy, SIPFA, warned that many more councils will follow unless they start to take decisions about their revenue budgets now. He said: 'This is a warning to every council that a strategy to draw down on reserves to balance the budget is a very risky strategy indeed.' And in Newcastle, we know, because we've sat through the debates in this chamber, we have taken difficult decisions about the revenue budget year on year with a very heavy heart. Where we have used our reserves, it's been to transform a service and get it ready for a different future in which less money will be available, either by new equipment, retraining staff, re-profiling the service, but never to prop it up, never to simply take from reserves and put that into the revenue budget. And we can take two lessons from this. Firstly, that a failure to plan effectively, a failure to have an honest conversation with residents, and a failure to put long-term financial plans in place will only see budgets spiral out of control, and the people who ultimately suffer will be the residents. I think the other lesson is for the party opposite. For years, with every difficult decision I have announced, we've had to sit and be told in this council chamber that this can be avoided if we just use up reserves. And the Lib Dems have called in previous years for millions of pounds to be taken from reserves to prop up services. Now, we all know the script: the Tories cut the money, we on this side of the chamber look at ways to save services, but know that it's impossible to do so without reducing the support available for the council, and we're honest with people. But then the Lib Dems arrive and promise to solve everything with reserves, shamelessly mixing up figures from earmarked and unearmarked reserves. And for example, they called for £5 million to be taken out of reserves in 2016-17, and nearly another £1 million last year, as well as £692,000 from the money that we set aside to tackle waste in the city. They will tell you of seemingly unlimited reserves, whilst knowing full well that the unearmarked reserves, the money set aside for a major incident or an unexpected and dramatic call on the council's funds, stands at just 10.1 million and has done for at least a decade. Well, today, their myth is bust. Put off the difficult decisions, and the council goes bust. It's happening now in Northamptonshire, it will happen elsewhere, but it will not happen here. One unavoidable part of government-ordered austerity, though, is that council tax is rising. In Newcastle, alongside additions from the Police and Fire Authority, there will be a nearly 5% increase. And the council tax rise is made up of two parts. Firstly, a 3% rise in the base council tax, money which goes towards services, and the rest comes in the form of the government's adult social care precept. For generations now, successive governments have recognised that a safety net was needed for children and adults in need of care. Funds were provided to local councils through revenue support grants to act as a care service, supporting the vulnerable and the elderly. But what we've seen over the last seven years is government stepping further and further away from that obligation, and shifting the burden of responsibility onto local households. But we all know really that council tax is a symptom of the broken local government finance system. It's a regressive tax that's not been changed since it was introduced in a hurry as a replacement for the poll tax in 1990. It's not fit for purpose, yet now, we're almost entirely reliant on it and business rates to fund all the services that we provide. By 2020, the council will be almost entirely reliant on two property-based taxes, both of which are woefully outdated in terms of their valuation. And the reason that council tax is regressive is that it penalises low-income families who pay more as a proportion of their income. That's why we have resisted this year the calls to max out the council tax increase, despite the government assuming that we would do so. It may look like a small difference, that 1% difference, but it will make a big difference to those who are already struggling on the breadline. And this year, in Newcastle, almost half the increase in council tax bills will be down to the government's adult social care precept, which frankly, is the wrong answer to the right question. It doesn't bring in enough money, but if we were to refuse to apply it, we would run the risk of legal challenge, as families in need would ask us why we didn't secure every penny we could to help those suffering. When it comes to care, Newcastle is a city which aims to be even healthier and safer. It's a city in which people genuinely care for each other and refuse to turn a blind eye to those in need. Just look at the magnificent response, for example, over the weekend to support homeless people, when people across the city came to open the cathedral for 48 hours to make sure that people had the support that they needed. But if you look at our population, we're a city in which people are living longer and living independently for longer. But that success comes at a cost to the state, one which government is reluctant to acknowledge. Over the last few years, we've seen a steadily growing care crisis emerge. Councils have found themselves struggling to cope with increased demand and fewer resources. We've all seen that graph: increased demand, fewer resources, the jaws will doom our treasurer's court. And many children and adults, older people, and especially those with learning disabilities, rely on the council for help, often for day-to-day care. And when that's at risk, the consequences can be heartbreaking. We all know that. It's a statement of the obvious. Yet, for some reason, both the coalition government and the Tories get away with cutting the money to help with even basic daily tasks. And I think it's because it happens behind closed doors. It's a personal, humbling, often lonely cut by a cowardly government who knows that council chambers will not be full of protesters when care services are at risk. We know here that we've had to reduce money for a whole range of things: school crossing patrols, increased money for bin collections, find new ways of safeguarding parks. Because if we don't take those decisions, the only alternative is another family left behind a closed door with no one coming for help. And that's the reality that everyone in this council chamber needs to think about when they see yet another petition for a road to be cleaned more often or a visitor service to remain open. Every visible cut that we make as a result of Tory austerity is one less cut to those we don't see, who don't complain, but who don't get by if we abandon them. Let me be clear: every single budget decision we take has to be offset against the money needed for care services. It's that simple. And to put this in context, we spend £107 million out of our £170 million net budget on care in this city. That 62 pence of every pound that this council spends is on care services and support. Now, we believe that that's our moral, social, as well as legal responsibility. But as we struggle to fund care for elderly and vulnerable people, we're not alone. Emerging nationally, we see a crisis in children's care services as well. There are more and more demands to support and intervene with fewer resources to go around. And that includes the cost of supporting the recommendations set out in the Serious Case Review that followed Operation Sanctuary. The moment the council was aware of the problem in the city, it mobilised into action, along with the police. Now, this was the right thing to do unquestionably, and has been recognised as such by the Serious Case Review. The scale of the abuse that was uncovered in this process is beyond what most people could imagine. And we have steadfastly supported the victims in their bravery with whatever resources we can find, including financially supporting the work of multi-agency safeguarding hub. Now, nobody would disagree that that was the right thing to do, but it has been a difficult decision taken elsewhere. Newcastle is rightly hailed as a national example in how to tackle the abuse seen in Operation Sanctuary. But while we win government praise for our work, we did not win government funding for it. And time and time again, we see that same argument of greater pressure from government to act, but with fewer and fewer resources. The difficult decisions we take today could have been far worse. We have invested in areas where we can either reduce running costs or make a profit be reinvested in services. And in the situation that we're in, we are absolutely committed to making sure that we continue to be a great north city sitting at the heart of modern Britain, a city committed to achieving social justice through the creation fundamentally of more and better jobs. And I think we see that best when our city stands together against Tory austerity. If we look at campaigns that we've seen around against the bedroom tax, or against cuts to health funding, or anti-immigration policies, we see our city truly coming together. And that sense of coming together in the face of adversity is soon going to be even more important than ever. With the greater uncertainty of Brexit approaching, we know that when government ends under pressure, local authorities suffer. And with no clear plan for Brexit, no assurance that the economy is in safe hands, it's increasingly obvious that Brexit may well be a significant shock to the system. We had the first confirmation of this earlier this year when the Treasury's projections emerged. It must have surprised no one to learn that the North East will be the worst hit, with projected growth down as much as 16% under the worst-case, no-deal, hard-case Brexit scenario. So we have to be prepared, Lord Mayor, both as a council and as a city, for what is coming our way in the next few years. That means making sure we are creating the right conditions for jobs, with our universities and our business communities, building the critical massive opportunities that are vital in order to weather Brexit. But in the public sector, we've been... But in the public sector, we've been suffering austerity since twenty-ten. And that has followed us through economic troubles and government spending policy which has favoured the South. What we've yet to see is the full impact of austerity coupled with a recession. And the over-centralised nature of our country, which has held back economic growth, could soon be compounded by a hard Brexit, which would not only continue to stretch public services to the limit, but could potentially see thousands of job losses. And I'm worried, Lord Mayor, seriously worried, about our capacity to respond in such circumstances. So this budget, Lord Mayor, continues our work of reform. Alongside fair and efficient use of every pound we spend through the revenue budget, it sets out an ambitious capital programme. And here we've been very successful at leveraging in funds from other areas like the Regional Growth Fund, Homes and Communities Agency, the LEF, and from private sector partners to add value to the resources that we've committed. But I'm also very grateful, by the way, to those that have taken part in the consultation exercises, because anyone who's done so will be aware that this budget does not pretend that there are easy answers, nor does it offer false hope of false security. But neither does it presume that our city is hopeless, neither does it presume that our city is at the mercy of forces beyond our control. This budget, Lord Mayor, sets out a clear vision for the provision of high-quality public services despite fewer resources and sets out the leadership role that the council will play over the next few years in steering our city through tough times. It is a realistic budget, Lord Mayor, with hope for the future, and I commend it to council.
Can I call on councillor McCarthy to second, please?
Lord Mayor, can I second and reserve the right to speak?
Yes, thank you. Can I now call on councillor Falconer to respond to the report and move the amendments?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I first of all express our appreciation for the fantastic work that the staff of this local authority did last week or the last ten days in the face of the most appalling weather we've had for a very long time. Staff in local services, staff in care services, all the support staff who had to back them up, and indeed the leader has mentioned those agencies and organisations in our city who played their part as well. And I think that's a very good indication of the spirit that is in this council despite all the troubles that have been documented and also in our city. Well, colleagues, here we are for another budget debate, if debate's the right word, because the exchanges that we've had in recent times haven't really taken the form of a debate. I must admit, when I got up this morning, I felt a bit like the Bill Murray character in Groundhog Day, where I thought we're going to have the same rhetoric and the same blame game of pinning the tail on the austerity donkey, and there's a little bit of it already. I hope I might be wrong, but let's see how it goes. However, one identical task that I, and one Groundhog task that I do want to start with is to thank the finance team in this council for putting together the budget for the administration, for supporting finance and budget scrutiny in responding to the many issues that we raised, and for doing their own job of scrutiny, a kind of scrutiny on our opposition amendments. And you'll see the Director of Resources' supplementary report again on those amendments. We had three meetings about them, exchanged several emails. I'm grateful for the time that he and Mark Nicholson have put into this, but I do wonder if we aren't actually wasting their and our time on what is a bit of a charade, because if last year has anything to go by, you really have no intention of debating our amendments in any meaningful sense. The response last year was how imprudent it would be, and already the leader's called it gestures, to take money from reserves, despite the director advising council that it would be perfectly legitimate and credible and affordable to do so if council wished to do it, and despite the fact that, of course, you took six million pounds yourself from reserves last year to balance the books. And that's perfectly acceptable, because isn't that what rainy day reserves are for? It's not just the transformation bits, but the bits that are causing real difficulties for our citizens that do need propping up, do need to give us time to think and time to refocus. How fortunate that these reporting requirements of the section one-five-one officer didn't apply when the present administration was in opposition. I'm a bit of a nerd, I keep all the budget amendments going back, and for several years the Labour budget amendments argued the deletion of certain service proposals, and I quote, "to be funded from reserves, contingencies, the transformation fund, or vehement from growth proposals." That's it, we can't make our mind up, which it is, we've got no intention of telling you which reserves or where from, you wouldn't get away with that now. But there we are. Another year, I remember Labour wanted to use the whole of the then airport dividend to fund a council tax standstill, mixing up, the leader, mixing up one-offs with continuing issues, not to mention the back-of-the-envelope proposals that you yourself presented in two thousand and eight that embarrassed councillor Beecham so much that he sat out the debate without speaking. And the other thing that's changed from those times, and forgive me for a little bit of reminiscing, but you probably understand why, is that in those days it was the done thing for the lead cabinet member spokesperson on finance to present the budget to the council about their stewardship of the council's finances, and that's changed now, and I'll leave you to your own conclusions. Why? One further observation, though, that I have about this process, I don't mind our amendments being subject to the third degree, but look at the huge numbers in some of the service proposals in front of you this evening, colleagues. Two point six million pounds to be saved on continuing care and support for adults with complex and multiple needs, one point two seven five on building and commercial enterprise, lots more like that. Two problems with this. First, there's insufficient detail of the costing of the various elements that make up these very large numbers, and that affects discussion about credibility, scrutiny, achievability. And secondly, how do you know from one year to another if they're delivered, how much gets rolled forward into the next budget year and gets double-counted in the narrative about savings requirements? Because the same budget heads tend to have the same large numbers in each year for transformation, new service models, reducing demand, we know why you have to do it, but we don't very often know the detail of it all. And when we discovered very large savings budgeted for the streamlining of the repair and maintenance service with YHN had been deferred, well, that came kind of late in the day. So if you look at the consultation responses, there's considerable frustration, especially among the voluntary and community sector representatives, that there are no progress reports about the achievement of what year-one savings. We're reminded that this is one year-one of a three-year cycle. They want to set alongside the proposals for year two some sense of how the council's getting on, how it's achieving what it set out to do in the previous year, and they're not there. Now, on the big issues that underlie the budget once again, you know, because we've said it many times, including the time when our party nationally was part of the coalition, that the grossly unfair allocation of cuts to areas of highest need is wholly unjustifiable and should be ended. Our view remains that cuts, if we're still going to have them, if we're going to have more of them, it looks as though we are, they should be equal percentage, proportionate to population, with a full and open resource equalisation formula, a safety net, an end to top slicing of revenue support grant, what's left of it, full funding of any new responsibilities and liabilities, all independently monitored and reported to Parliament, not at the whim of the Treasury. But we all know that actually what's really needed, if we're honest, is a fundamental reform of local government funding, including changes to domestic rating bands at the top end. And everybody shirked it, because it's too difficult, and everybody's scared of having to face the losers as well as accepting they'll be winners. So, you know, we still, despite saying all of that, and we believe all of that, we still take issue with the spin that continues to be attached to the city's budgets, the deliberate conflating of cost pressures and grant reductions to hype up the numbers and the narrative. And the leader's forward to the budget document, he says, and he said again just now, austerity means our cities on track to have lost, his word, lost, two hundred and eighty-three million pounds by twenty-twenty. No, cost pressures are more than half of that cumulative figure. Since when did any government, including the last Labour government, automatically compensate councils for every element of inflation or extra demand? And it's right that we should be expected to find new and better and less costly ways of doing things, just as businesses have to do, just as this council has done under both administrations. When we asked in scrutiny, would it please be possible to quantify spending reductions which have directly affected the level of service to our citizens as opposed to those that have been absorbed by efficiencies, we were told, sorry, we don't currently hold this information. Now, I think, you know, given that not so long ago we produced an efficiency plan that was submitted to government, I'm rather surprised at that. Now, we know that times are tougher than they've ever been for us, for local government, but you know, the council's financial position is bad, but not as desperate as gloomy as it's made out. And I'm going to present some of the numbers, but just to say one thing, I wasn't going to comment on Northamptonshire, because I don't believe that I know all the details, but I do understand that they made some terrible decisions, that it completely, fifty-three million pounds to build a new civic centre, and they're paying for that, outsourcing of services and paying through PFI schemes that they got lumbered with, like we all have from Labour government days, all sorts of things. It's an accusation of general financial mismanagement, not just insufficient grant income in Northamptonshire. And I don't like to see any local authority run into those circumstances and pray God we don't. But I want to just invite council to look at our actual numbers here, because they're important. We don't often discuss the numbers in the budget. Here we are, you know, we've got how many, hundred and two hundred pages or whatever, full of interesting numbers that tell us what we're spending on, or some of what we're spending on, what we're proposing to cut, and how things move from one year to another. So I'm just going to remind you of this, that a year ago, the net revenue budget for this year, that's just ending, seventeen eighteen, was set at two hundred and twenty-three million pounds. For reasons not really explained, in the draft budget papers published in November, the consultation budget, that figure for this year has been adjusted by a million and a half, and now three months later, in this final budget paper set in front of you, about this year, the figure's restated again, up another three million. So two hundred and twenty-seven million pounds. Suddenly, business rate income for this year jumped by nearly three million between November and now. And compared to what the report to last year's budget meeting said, there are actually five and a half million up, or seven percent up. Good news, that's a big number, it's good news, it's income we can use. Business rates for the coming year are strong. These figures do seem to keep moving all the time, it seems, some movement you might understand, but these are large amounts, we're pleased, but they do seem to get slipped in somehow under the radar. Take council tax income. Because of the two and a half million pounds increase in the council tax base, double what was expected, sprung on us at the January council meeting, the total increase in council tax income year-on-year, current year just ending to next year, is around seven and a half percent. More good news, seven and a half million pounds. And what's the impact on the revenue budget as a whole? Well, we're told a year ago, oh, it's going down, keeps going down, isn't it absolutely dreadful? Actually, it's up. It's now going to be up next year on this year. Well, that's good news, let's celebrate that, rather than pretend that the whole thing is actually a completely utterly different narrative. Council tax income and business rates are both significantly, in addition to what we expected last year, and more than offsetting the cut in the revenue support grant. And there's more good news, though. If you look at the general rate fund as a whole, and if you're looking at your report, it's the pie chart on page seven, not just income from the rate support grant and the business rates and council tax, but the lot, everything. In last year's budget, it was going to be five hundred and thirty-four million. Three months ago, in the draft budget, it was going to be five forty-two for this year, up a handy eight million. Now, three months later, it's predicted to be up another five million. So we're thirteen million pounds up on last year. And within this figure, specific government grants, and I'm not talking about revenue support grant, I'm talking about the specific grants that you, we don't seem to mention much of them, but they still provide so many of the key services that our citizens need. Those specific grants, not including school grants, are ninety-two point five million pounds, which is ten million pounds higher than predicted in the report only three months ago. Might be something to do with adjustments, but even allowing for that, it's well up, it's up in millions. And when you hear of the narrative of receiving no future support from government grant, it kind of conveniently forgets all these specific grants, not to mention our own decisions about income from fees and charges, which go, and the other categories of income. So look, it's tough, but the glass isn't always half-empty. Now, on reserves, we mentioned reserves already. To aid our understanding, at least we can say that the reserves in the draft budget, the consultation budget, and the reserves in the budget in front of you haven't changed that much, but they're three million more, so there's three million pounds more in reserves than when you set the budget and consulted with the public on the budget. And the categories of reserves are all the same, except for the collection fund has gone up dramatically from three million to five million, and that's something to do with concern about vulnerability to business rate appeals, although interestingly, there was something in the House of Commons the other day about some government initiative about pooling risk on that, which we'll no doubt find more about. The public health reserve's gone up by more than fifty percent for reasons that are not explained. And most interesting of all, and we've heard about it, the airport dividend reserve, up from three point three million to five point one million in three months. And I say most interesting of all, because, not just because of the increase since November, but because last year, there wasn't any such reserve, it didn't exist. So, good to have a dividend from the airport, good to have this extra unexpected dividend two or three months ago, good to be able to spend some of it on play equipment and so on. However, there are other things that it could be spent on as well, and some of those things are mentioned in our amendments. The day before, isn't it coincidence? The day before we presented our amendment, there's some ideas about using that airport dividend extra, not last year's bit, but the extra, the council pulls a rabbit out of the hat and says, yes, we're going to spend this on playgrounds and playparks. Well, actually, we've been asking questions about that for the best part of a year, and we were told, yes, the council's going to do something. So either you've been waiting for an extra dividend to come along, or you had no real intention of doing it, but here's serendipity. Well, fine, that's absolutely great, but it's only using up a part of that extra airport dividend, and it doesn't stop you allocating the rest of it to the things that are in our budget amendments. And I wonder anyway, perish the thought that I should be cynical, but I wonder if this money just happening now is a bit of a sweetener to the mystery trust that you're intending to hand the management of our parks to? Because what I say is yes to the investment in playgrounds, but no to the parks handover. Now, a few comments quickly on capital. For two years, we've been asking, we, I say, this side of the house plus budget scrutiny, we've been asking for sight of a paper on the investment and divestment approach of the council. And we were told for one year, we were told, yes, it's in preparation, and then more recently we were told, well, we have a process for deciding these things, and each case, each business case has to be made. Well, that's very fine, you would expect nothing less than that. But now, the government requirement to produce a capital strategy explaining the council's approach to investment and borrowing and to acquisitions and disposals, there's statutory guidance, there's a new SIP for code. It's a pity we have to wait for this before this rather important piece of information, because we are big investors in all sorts of ways, but we're also selling off assets. And it would be really good to have a proper understanding what the council's approach is to acquiring or divesting of assets. Maybe in the next year we'll be able to find out a little bit more about it. And two things in passing on capital, which one of our colleagues is going to say something more about one of them later, but you know, borrowing for the refurbishment of the civic centre was first announced four years ago, it was eighteen million pounds, now it's forty-five million, but with about thirty million, if you look at the capital programme, it's the biggest single item in the capital programme, all of that still to come forward. And I do think that there are questions that need to be asked yet about how this is being managed. And on capital receipts, and that's another way in which, as you well know, reserves are augmented, and sometimes augmented through serendipity, through good fortune. Look at Jesmond Nursery, you know, we're getting something like three or four million pounds more than we expected, we could have had more still, three or four million pounds than we expected for a project that's about building retirement flats and executive housing, take your own view about that. But that's the kind of money that comes into reserves unexpectedly, and there's no point just saying the minute it comes in, we're going to, we'll try and create something so we say it's allocated and nobody else can even advance an argument to use how, use a small part of a reserve like that. Now, we know you don't like to hear our criticism of your spin on the budget numbers, and maybe some of you, like last year, have all got the stuff ready. It's all the fault of the Lib Dems and the tradition of our Groundhog Day debates. But let's remind you, it was the infamous letter to his successor from the Chief Secretary of the Treasury, Liam Byrne, "I'm sorry, but there's no money left, good luck", that gave momentum to the narrative about austerity. But you should know that the Lib Dems have never peddled the simplistic line that it was all about too much public expenditure. It was Vince Cable irritating to you, as we know, who saw it coming and warned Gordon Brown, the credit bubble, property asset prices allowed to go crazy, bankers allowed to play risky games with complex and untested derivatives, bundling dodgy debts into securities and selling them around the world on an epic scale, allowing the bankers to pay themselves fortune, a total, total failure. fortune, a total, total failure of regulation. That is my charge of Labour and Labour's contribution to our austerity position, not necessarily spending on the good things, health service and other things that they did, but for that complete lax regulation of our economy, total economic mismanagement. And that is one of the core reasons why we were where we were in two thousand and ten. And it's about time you were big enough to admit that. And alongside that, we might remind you of those thirteen years in control, when you could have reformed local government's funding, you could have reformed social care funding, and you never did, all wasted opportunities. So thank you for your, your contribution to the crash. We've all made our contribution to the purposes of the circumstance of austerity now. I mentioned PFI, borrowing billions off balance sheets to, that next, future generations have to pay, those of us who are school governors know all about that kind of thing, or people in, in the health business. Now, look, our, our amendments are self-explanatory, and they're set out, I imagine they'll be moved separately at the end of the debate, as in previous years, and my colleagues will comment on them in their speeches. This meeting of ours, this budget-setting meeting of ours, council tax setting meeting, tends to coincide with the week of the Oscars. If I had three billboards outside Newcastle Civic Centre, St Mary's Place, I would have one of them say, Mr Forbes, stop the blame game, accept some responsibility for where we are. Number two would say, fix the everyday things that people value, and number three would say, use your reserves, that's what they're there for, support these sensible amendments.
Thank you, councillor Faulkner. Councillor Ramon, just a second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, second and reserve the right to speak, please.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Right, I would remind members that under standing order seventeen F six, the budget proposals and the amendments will be subject of a single debate, and then each amendment will be voted on in turn. A number of members have already indicated that they wish to speak. Firstly, I will take these speakers one at a time from each side, and then I will ask members to indicate if they want to speak. Finally, I will call on members who reserved the right to speak. Thank you. Right, the first one is councillor O'Brien.
Didn't expect you first. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I would like to say one thing in support of councillor Faulkner, yes, I think the officers have done a splendid job in trying to help with the budget process. But I'd also like to say, I'm always quite amazed at councillor Faulkner, who can speak for so long and say so little. He's an incredible man. I would also like to really say to my colleagues, I commend them for the work they've done on the budget. It has been for them extremely difficult and extremely testing, but I think they've done as good a job as they could have done. But we always must remember all the time that the reasons we're going through difficulties is not because of any incompetence in this council, it's because of the incompetence and stupidity of our central government. Now, the, the Lib Dems have tabled a number, what I regard as quite, quite feeble amendments, they, they really do not address some of the issues. They say nothing about the government cuts in public spending. Why? Because they support them. They support them. I mean, they call themselves the Lib Dems, they're not Lib Dems, they're Lib Tories, that's who they are. They support the government and cuts of that kind. I mean, you know, really, and they say nothing about the real issues and problems. For example, the, the ratio of spending in this country is something like eighty-twenty, where if you look at our European colleagues and our North American colleagues, it's fifty-fifty. And what you have there is a sense of that the local authorities are much closer to the people and able to respond to their needs and, and use their money in different kinds of ways. Our money is set down by the Treasury as to how we're going to spend it. There is little or no flexibility, and that is part of the problem. We, councillor Forbes mentioned, we're becoming more and more centralised. I believe this country is becoming more like North Korea. We need to have a real change to government, a real decentralisation. And what the, what the Lib Dems haven't pointed out is that historically, it's cities, cities that innovate. Most of the gritty, individuals as well, but most of the really good ideas, such as transport utilities, were developed by cities. National governments don't innovate. When they do try, they make a real mess of it. Think of the poll tax and a Tory policy, the PFI. Those are examples of how bad, but is it a Tory but PFI, yes, I know we, we've used it, but I don't, don't agree with it. So there's been lots of things that have gone wrong. And I think also the thing I find quite appalling about their amendments is they're not really costing very well. There's nothing, nothing said, there's nothing said about sustainability, but given their record on sustainability, I'm hardly surprised. What I would like to say is that we need to have, not just debate about budgets, but we need to have a debate about local council funding. We need to have a process of what I'd like to call remunis civilisation, where cities take more and more control. Over the, over the globe now, more than half of the world population live in cities. By twenty fifty, that will be some seventy percent. Ideas are coming from, from cities, they're not coming from nation states, they're coming from cities. The real progress that has been made, for example, in climate change, has been made in cities, not by nation states. The Paris Agreement is quite feeble, but the work that cities do is really quite good. So we need to have a sense that we argue with government, that they need to really devolve more and more power. And in fact, we could get rid of most of our parliament, we just don't need it. Six hundred odd MPs, I would say, get rid of four hundred of them. You know, let's have a, and turn the Palace of Westminster where it should be, a museum. Yeah, it's not good for anything else. And let us, people who are close to the people, who are agile, who are able to innovate, able to do things quickly in cities, let us lead on the policy, because that's where we're going to get things really sorted out. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Brien. Councillor Hoddart.
Oh, thank you, Lord Mayor. I hadn't expected that little outburst from councillor O'Brien. He mentioned our European colleagues. Yes, perhaps he doesn't know that the Tories in Germany are in coalition with the Labour Party, perhaps he'd forgotten that. Right, on to the budget, again, they're on, on to the budget. On page thirty-seven, councillor Forbes, it mentions civic centre office costs has been twenty-eight point nine million. I wonder if he could give us some further information on this, because we've read costs of eighteen million borrowing, now twenty-eight and forty-five. So I'd like to, some explanation about the variation there. On page forty-one, there's something called the Housing Benefit Subsidy Reserve, which I have to say, I didn't know we had one, which is an amount set aside to mitigate risk of housing benefit subsidy overspends. That's easy to understand, isn't it? Can you explain how much overspend there was last year, and what's the estimate for this for the current year, please? And on page sixty-three, there's a mention of the European Investment Bank, mentioned as a source of borrowing. Can he tell us what he thinks will happen after Brexit, what effect that will have on borrowing? And both the leader has made verbal comments, and the deputy leader has made a lot of comments in writing about the effects of austerity, the effect on the quality of life for our citizens. And councillor Forbes has stressed the repercussions of current government policy on local government, and we don't disagree here, we think we've had a terrible blow in local government. However, in the past week, we've read comments from the Institute of Fiscal Studies, seeing, I mean, in The Guardian and The Observer as well, stating that George Osborne's prediction about reducing the deficit have come true here and now in this past week. So leaving aside any other borrowing or any other debt, I'd like to ask councillor Forbes if he thinks the things may start to get better, and if we will no longer be bearing the, the benefit of deficit reduction in the light of this news. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hoddart. Councillor Ainslie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, I don't know what the Lib Dems are actually thinking of when they suggest this one-off capital funding of two point six million per highways and footpaths. And to suggest that each ward is given a locally determined budget of a hundred thousand pounds is quite frankly ridiculous. Is this because they want to control their chosen vanity projects in the ward they represent? That is, if they represent any ward after the May elections. Locally determined budgets will also, will remove strategic planning and the ability, the ability to prioritise repairs to roads and footpaths across the city. We have a transport asset management plan, which sets out how we make best use of our available resources to deal with the maintenance of the entire highways network, and to allocate funding to wards which seriously undermine this. The roads and pavements across the castle require investment of approximately a hundred and forty million pounds to bring them up to a decent standard. This is due to the fact that they've suffered years of underinvestment, due to budget cuts and austerity, which, surprise, surprise, was first introduced by the coalition government, of which I believe the party opposite were part. I didn't disappoint you then, David. The funding for road maintenance has been reduced by approximately two-thirds as a result of their austerity measures. And as per the suggestion to reinstate the funding for school crossing patrols from the airport dividend, are they even aware that this is a one-off payment? Do they have plans how to fund the service in future years? Or is this just more politicking from the Lib Dems in the run-up to the elections than me? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ainslie. Councillor Lawrie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I also add my thanks to the staff across the council who've worked in the extreme weather, but I'd also like to sympathise with those who didn't make it in and are now having to work extra hours to make the time up. There's a lot of opportunity for a discussed Labour budget proposals for twenty eighteen, nineteen. We're aware that the Labour council has been vocal in talking about cuts to cities finances, but I would like to look at the figures again for twenty eighteen, nineteen, because I believe there is a different story. In November, the forecast was two, two point, two hundred and twenty-two point nine million for the net revenue budget. This is now, four months later, got an extra five million pounds. Since November, Benson's rate income has jumped by four million, and council tax has risen by an additional two million. The total general rate fund was estimated to be five hundred and thirty-four point four, it's now five hundred and forty-seven, almost thirteen million pounds more. Add this to the council's estimated reserves suddenly increasing, with the collection fund reserve up from three to five million, public health reserves up from one to one point six, airport dividend now at, now at five point one million, and so it goes on. I'm sure the members opposite are well aware of just how much money has come in, I'm sorry I've had to repeat this to you. So on, with that, we are faced with a four point nine five percent rise in council tax. And then come, come councillor Forbes' big announcements, like the rabbits out the hat. More and more, the leader, the leader of council reminds me of a baraboy trader. What we get is a minimum offer to the public, then adding to it at the last minute to make it appear too good to be true. We've all seen them, they show you a box, put in an item and offer to the public, continuing to add items until the offer looks too good to refuse, then supply the clamouring buyers with a sealed box which contains nothing. So what do we have? The budget process began late last year, there was a public consultation, scrutiny examination, reports to Cabinet. Then suddenly, we have announced a one million clean-up across the city from the airport dividend. It's amazing that the last time I recall this happening was in two thousand and four, just before the all-up election, and we all know what happened then. However, we now have an announcement of money for play areas, no consultation, no detail, just cash, which if you read carefully, all play areas will be considered. What does that mean? What would be the criteria? Again, something thrown in the box to attract the buyers, but with no substance. What is it, what is interesting is that the discussions about the airport dividend, which we had with the financial director and staff, when we asked about using it, we were told that no, but nothing was ever said to the opposition or to scrutiny, that there was actually, this money had been allocated to other things. Now, you can call me cynical if you want, but I don't know if that was deliberate or if it was just a slip of the tongue, I'll, I'll be generous and think it was just a slip. However, Lord Mayor, last year councillor Forbes criticised the Lib Dems, we suggested joined up services, and he accused us rabidly of selling the city on the front page of The Chronicle. Yet a year on, we have joined services with Northumberland and a desperation to form a new town of, North of Tyne Authority. Lord Mayor, once again, we have budget cutting at the heart of services. We have submitted amendments, which I have to say councillor O'Brien, were costed and approved by the Director of Finance. We have a city whose highways are not fit of purpose, councillor Ainslie, under once-in-a-fourteen-year clean-up and an offer of improved play areas with strings attached. I, and I hope my colleagues, could not support this snake oil budget from Labour. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lawrie. Councillor Kemp.
So what is it that you're actually proposing? Blatant politicking with scant regard to fiscal probity are the interests of local residents long term. The amendments lack principle, financial nous or courage. We're in unprecedented times being decimated by a Tory government hell-bent on destroying local government and local government services, and this is what you offer. Amendment one, let's have some context, shall we? What we propose is to increase garden waste collection price from one pound to two pounds collection, that's twenty pounds to forty pounds a year. We checked and noted that neighbouring councils currently charge between one pound forty-eight and two pounds twenty per collection, so I do not think it's unreasonable to position ourselves somewhere in this cost range. Alongside the increase is a planned campaign to promote the services much more significantly and to make the service sustainable. Our statement in the IAA is very clear, and that we are undertaking a wholesale review of household waste recycling centres. This means we are reviewing all of the household waste recycling centres. So why on earth do you propose the retention of Brunswick? What are you actually saying? Do you want to stop the review? Do you not want innovation? Do you not want efficiencies? The purpose of the review is to do exactly that, and we are looking at each individual location, and that is why we deferred the closure of Brunswick, to make sure that all of the sites are reviewed, and we come up with a conclusion and a sound business case. This works underway and will be concluded soon. What I'd like to know is where you'd get the money from, from year two onwards? The garden waste provides a sustainable income stream. Amendment two, well, they say imitation is the greatest form of flattery. You proposed to roll out a programme of half a million investment for cleansing the city, and of course, this amendment includes that typically irritating whiny noise of not just the city centre. But the proposal sounds vaguely familiar. Oh, yes, that would be the one million pounds that this Labour administration has invested this year for the big spring clean, across the whole city, working with ward councillors across the whole city, not just the city centre, to target litter hotspots. And I'm extremely grateful for all the staff for the work that they are doing and will be doing through this programme. I guess from this amendment, what the opposition are actually doing is deviating from all the ludicrous literature or rubbish that they are distributing during the election period, where they claim Labour is failing on dealing with rubbish and cleansing neighbourhoods, and the Lib Dems would change this. Well, I suggest to you, your amendment presents a fifty percent cut in what Labour has done this year, will this be the next lead item in your focus item? I doubt it. Amendment four, and here the posturing begins. I won't repeat earlier debates, suffice to say we were clear that the loss of school crossing patrol staff was an extremely difficult decision, but we did our best to find other solutions. We made the announcement a year ahead of the implementation. We have retained the crossing staff where there is a statutory requirement, naturally, and we worked with local schools and all councillors to seek to find funding to continue the service. Unfortunately, this was not successful. It's fantastic that you are so committed to this service, but you did nothing to preserve it. it that whole year and subsequently. This illustrates just how opportunistic you are, but also how inconsiderate the parents, children, schools, and the individuals who'll be employed for a year. And please don't assume you can do this by the time you found the money in a year to retain the post, because as I've already said, you failed to do it so far, so where's the magic rabbit now? There appears to be little thought put into this proposal. Have you considered the process, the need to go out and recruit, the training, and also the very fact that what you propose is reintroducing the service for a year and then opening up all the hurt yet again? It's shameful. Amendment five, this is a commitment which has been based yet again on a year with the investment made throughout the airport dividend. I'm not clear even whether the figures you are basing this amendment on include disposal costs, it's not included in the commentary. The use of airport dividend reserve means this is time limited, so where would we find the ongoing £120,000 year for future years? You propose to implement a programme of new bin installation with no business plan in place, simply a hope that you will generate new income. Very sound fiscal. Once publicly committed to, 200 bins will be difficult to remove without ongoing revenue. What are these notional additional income opportunities, fees, charges and sponsorship? No detail, but David, you're very happy to criticise our lack of detail. What I find incredible is that despite what you say, you are simply papering over the situation. You make proposals to utilise the airport dividend in a pathetic attempt at winning electorally, but this shows a lack of political and financial judgement. The dividend is a one-off, so your proposals are simply for a year, with no strategic thought of continuity, nor it seems any thought of local people. Are you looking to deceive people, or will you be honest and tell the people of Newcastle that what you offer is a last-of-plast politics and a throwing away of the airport dividend, which could be an opportunity to do something innovative for the city? I urge council to reject the amendments and support the budget.
Thank you councillor Kemp. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, over the last seven years, we have heard more or less the same budget speeches from Labour councillors, how the state of local government finances is all the fault of the nasty coalition government. Three years after the Liberal Democrats left government, they still try to claim we are somehow responsible for the actions of the Tory government. Yet five minutes after Labour lost power in 2010, Labour councillors were busy denying any responsibility for the mess the country was in. So just to remind you, that in 2010, there was no money left, that Labour left our country with a mountain of dirt, that every minute the government was spending a staggering £80,000 on interest, over £800 million a week, that the Labour Party covered up details of the £44 billion of cuts they themselves had planned, that Labour made billions of pounds of unfunded spending promises, cynically raising people's hopes when they knew the coffers were bare, that they helped create the fiscal bombshell in the first place by refusing to take action against the reckless banks even when Vince Cable warned of the risks they were taking. Having said that, over the last seven years, Liberal Democrats have always agreed with Labour colleagues that local government has had to take far more of its share of the cuts being made. We have condemned the unfairness of the cuts imposed by the Tory government and the blatant political manoeuvring that has led to Tory councillors getting benefit at the expense of urban areas. However, we are also highly critical of Labour councillors for failing to push forward with measures we have suggested for making savings. For example, the move towards shared services has been painfully slow and needs to gain some real momentum. Two years ago, I explained at the budget meeting how Liberal Democrat Run Sutton was making huge overall savings through joint commissioning and shared services. Saving £10.5 million by joint commissioning of community safety services with the Metropolitan Police, £10 million by sharing the payroll and employee database with Kingston, Richmond and Merton councils, £4 million sharing IT services with Kingston, another £1.3 million by sharing HR services with Merton, £200,000 sharing the adult emergency duty team between Merton, Richmond and Kingston, and £600,000 through a joint waste partnership with Merton, Croydon and Kingston. Sutton is a small council, but it was saving £27 million per year. In contrast, the steps this council has taken towards shared services have been hesitant and painfully slow. Yet such savings councillor Kemp could easily pay for the amendments we have suggested to the budget, both this year and in the future. There has been some progress towards integration of health and social care, but again, this seems to move more quickly. And if we used such things as shared services, it would remove the need to use reserves to fund threatened services that we have. Now, I want to speak about this year's proposals for adult care. The budget states that we will continue to manage demand for and reduce reliance on adult social care services, with proposals to reduce the budget by £720,000 for early intervention and by over £2.5 million for continuing care. Yet with an aging population, it has proved difficult to make planned savings in the past. And when we look at the estimated outturn for 1718, the council is projecting a £4.6 million potential overspend on its net revenue budget, with the main area of pressure relating to adult and children's social care. So how confident can we be that this year's proposed savings are any more achievable? And we share the concern expressed by Health Watch that the proposals could lead to some needs not being met and some people accessing care only at the point of crisis. We also share the concern that the introduction of a charge for the money management service could have a negative impact on the take-up of the service. NCBS have also valid concerns about the risk of the cuts leading to job losses in the voluntary and private sector, which could increase the negative effects of the cuts. The amendments we are putting forward mirror the concerns raised by almost all the residents I speak to. They are concerned about the deterioration of their local areas, the appalling state of their roads and pavements, the huge numbers of unrepaired potholes, the increase in litter, the lack of ground maintenance and the removal of litter bins. The proposed increased charge for collecting green waste at a time when the council is struggling with recycling rates makes no sense whatsoever and will, I am sure, be counterproductive. And the sudden availability of a £1 million clean-up fund just a few weeks before the local elections will do nothing to tackle the underlying problem of neighbourhood neglect. As for play areas, I'm obviously delighted, having raised this on a number of occasions, that we're going to spend some money on play areas. But councillor Forbes fails to point out that the state of the play areas happens to be due to a total neglect of maintenance for so many years. And I have another concern, we don't actually have the capacity to do this work in the council anymore. In my ward, we've been trying to spend £106 money on play areas for about three years. The progress has been painfully slow, getting estimates, getting costs. Every time we've gone back to offices, the costs have gone up more and more, so that we don't any more have enough money to actually do the work we wanted to carry out. And when we finally did get agreement, we were told that nothing could be done until the temperature could be guaranteed to be more than 10 degrees centigrade for at least a week, so that put it off for yet another six months. How are we going to actually find the capacity to spend a million pounds? I'd like to see, but it is of course welcome. Lord Mayor, of course the cuts are unfair, and yet again, it's a difficult budget, but we believe Labour continue to make the wrong choices. Our proposals would allow us to deal with many of the concerns raised by Newcastle residents, and I urge council to accept them.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Mendelsom?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm quite a matter-of-fact sort of person. I probably don't manage my own budgets particularly well at home, but I'm really disappointed in these amendments this year for the Liberals, because I think they're probably the weakest that we've seen. Some years I've even found them quite attractive, but this year, they seem particularly short-sighted and not really financially sensible. I'm going to particularly talk about the street bins, the proposal to cut back the number, to put in more street bins, because that's something that we've actually started to see implemented, the reduction. And like most councillors, we've been heavily involved in that and we've had a lot of feedback and concerns about the implementation of the street bids. But we know that the workforce has been reduced, and this is a really good means of ensuring that the litter bins are emptied regularly, can be better monitored and placed in the most and well-used positions with the same capacity. It's realistic, and it actually has proved, certainly what I have seen, that there's no excess litter because of them. We're all working to reduce some waste, aren't we? That's probably what the Waste Commission says, so to build in these numbers of litter bins, assuming there's always going to be litter, it's like building more roads and the cars will come, which we're trying not to do. So I think this is a very short-sighted approach, given that it's only for a year anyway. So we're all working to reduce that, enforcement, education, that's the way to do it, to minimise waste and littering, as seen in the Waste Commission and the proposals this council will be putting forward to based on that. I thought the review that was carried out with the communities really raised the profile of waste, and certainly where we have them, where we've seen bins reduced, there is no more litter on the ground as a result of it, and if there is, then we need to look at enforcement. Some bins were replaced because of community consultation, most weren't. And we now see them emptied regularly, they're very responsive, the new system means that emptying is more responsive, we don't see many overloaded bins. So it's just a practical point actually, but I did want to make it, because as I say, it's something that we've seen in place, and to spend a one-year off, putting more bins in when there aren't the people to do them, and so it ends up a weaker service across all the bins, it just didn't seem to make sense. So it's just my logical head sort of just quite amazed by it and disappointed by it.
Thank you councillor Mendelsom. Councillor Gallagher?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's a few Labour speakers have questioned whether these amendments are financially okay and what have you. Well, they've been approved by the officers, so I presume they must be. And what these amendments are about really is the everyday things, it's the everyday things that you're getting wrong. You know, it's the problems with litter and things like that. The bins, for example, when you changed the big bins around, we had huge problems, you know, I had loads of emails and phone calls from people who had great issues because the bins are in the wrong places, et cetera. Sorry? I don't know. Okay, okay, that's fine. So, you know, as I say, it's these everyday things that aren't being done properly, and that's what these amendments are about. David mentioned the Jesmond Dean Nursery site, and now that's in my ward, I would have preferred it to stay as a plant nursery, but it isn't. So now it's been sold off, and yet round the corner, you know, there's a Greenfield site that's been dug up for housing, you know. So it's that sort of joined-up thinking we're not seeing anymore, unfortunately. And the money from the Jesmond Dean Nursery, of course, won't be sort of kept locally in any way, and we've got great local groups like the Friends of Gosso Central Park who are running on a shoestring and trying to keep the park going, you know, so it's a great shame that they won't see any extra money. I mean, finally, I'm always quite amused by the Labour councillors, so when they say, well, you know, yes, you're making cuts, but they're not really your cuts, you know, they're somebody else's cuts, you know, an older boy told me to do it, sort of thing. And I am really puzzled by that, because when we ran the council, of course, you used to describe them as Lib Dem council cuts, and you said that the council received a certain amount of money, and it was up to the administration to decide how to spend that money, and if the administration decided to make cuts, well then that was Lib Dem council cuts. But obviously you don't see these as Labour council cuts, you say that they are your cuts, but they're not your cuts. You're actually the Schrodinger's councillors of local government.
Thank you councillor Gallagher. Councillor Kilgawa?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just take exception to councillor Gallagher's statement that we're getting everyday services wrong? Our adult care services managed to, during horrendous weather, our staff managed to turn out, keep every single service that we provide open. Visit 280 people in their home to help them get through those difficult times. Shame on you, frankly, I'm very proud of the services that we... Let me speak, thank you. Sorry, Lord Mayor. As the leader of councils already alluded to, the national funding crisis and adult social care that we've been warning of for several years has finally been acknowledged nationally. And I'm sorry we keep saying this councillor Taylor, but it's because it's the truth. The government's inadequate effort to address the crisis sees councils such as ours having to increase the social care precept, passing the book and shifting the cost of central government, sorry, from central government to local council taxpayers. The government has announced another one-off, one-year adult social care grant which in Newcastle amounts to less than a million pounds, at a time when we estimate cost pressures of over £10.5 million this financial year alone. While we'll use additional income streams such as the Improve Better Care Fund, the Adult Social Care Grant and the Social Care Precept to improve the interface between health and social care, to stabilise the care market and to investigate new ways of working, they're all temporary funding sources which represent potential cliff edges when that money stops. The only real way to protect adult social care services, which we've repeatedly called for, would be for an injection of genuinely new money from the government, and we continue to call on them to act swiftly and fairly to ensure that all our residents who depend on our social care services can enjoy dignity and a quality of life that they deserve. We look forward to the government's social care green paper, although I very much doubt they'll address the fundamental and difficult issues of funding social care in a fair way and at an adequate level. Despite this national crisis, adult social care in Newcastle has a track record in these times of austerity of innovation and service delivery. Our budget proposals are not only innovative, but are financially sustainable. We've protected vital care services, and we're designing and reconfiguring services that produce better outcomes for our residents as well as savings. The three-year budget proposals that we agreed last year are already yielding results, and although the targets are challenging, I am confident we can meet them. Councillor Taylor quoted a figure of £4.6 million projected overspend, that's not actually accurate, I understand from one of my more recent meetings, that we hope to balance the books by then. And also where the overspend is, it's not actually in the services that you're suggesting. Does it? But it's actually around different, it's not the services that you're referring to around adult social care where there's an increase in demand as far as our rehabilitation services and people needing social care, it's around services like, around mental health services, again, because we're seeing the impact of cuts to the public sector elsewhere in the health service. We're using, sorry. Some of our innovations, sorry, include new day centre provision to support adults with complex needs, investing in new purpose-built accommodation for adults with learning disabilities and autism, and developing a step-up, step-down service to help restore people's independence after a period of intense support. We're using the adult social care grant and additional funds raised through the precept wisely. I'm delighted that with Health Partners, we continue to fund Biker Lodge, our dementia resource centre and its staff, until the review of the intermediate care service is complete. The Time to Think beds are proving to be very successful, as has been placing mental health social workers in A and E. We've deferred the proposed budget reductions to carers while actually increasing the Carers' Opportunity Fund, recognising the tremendous amount of care and support that carers provide in our communities. We will continue to fund our sexual exploitation hub, nationally recognised by government as a model of good practice, as the leader of council mentioned, through temporary monies until a permanent funding solution can be found. We know the challenges we face, and indeed, social care faces nationally, but there is much to be proud of in adult social care in Newcastle and indeed across the whole council. However, there's no getting away from the fact that further cuts, £60 million across this council over the period of this three-year budget, £283 million in cuts and cost pressures from the council's budget by 2020, will have a significant impact on our residents and communities. But we're committed to doing our utmost to minimise that impact, because this Labour council will always have fairness and the protection of the vulnerable at the heart of its agenda, and will, despite ongoing austerity, seek to protect our city and our residents from the worst of this government's attacks. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kilgawa. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Now, over the last few weeks, I've been contacted by Parklands residents who have asked me to speak on their behalf tonight, and tell you that many older people living in our ward, and indeed throughout the city, are struggling to manage on fixed incomes. And these large increases in council tax can cause them real financial difficulties. These residents may live in houses that have increased in value over the many years that they've lived there, but being on a fixed income can mean that life isn't as easy as some would have you think. And apart from wanting to see lower council tax increases, residents want to see their money being spent wisely. They want clean and safe streets with footpaths that are of a decent standard and don't cause them to fall. They want their children and grandchildren to get about safely, especially to school, as that is at a time when the roads are very busy, so they want school crossing patrols. They want libraries open longer hours, more litter bins and parks that can be used by all. They want value for money and to live in a city that is clean and respects all its residents. And not surprisingly, many people... And not surprisingly, many people have said to me that things were much better when the Liberal Democrats ran the city council. In last year's budget debate, I raised the issue of the Great North City Fund. And we're still waiting to find out what is happening with this fund. We wish to see it used for activities that will help boost the local economy and promote health and wellbeing for our residents. And we would like to see more being done to promote tourism and to help tourists when they arrive in the city. We'd also like to know what governance and scrutiny arrangements the Labour group have in mind for this money, as it needs to be spent wisely and with accountability and transparency. And we want to know how it links with N G I and how events will relate to the Great North exhibition. So can we have some information about this, please? Last year, I listed some of our ideas on how this money could be spent. And in the spirit of Groundhog Day, I'll repeat them again this year. We suggested perhaps a Royal Variety Performance at the Theatre Royal, holding BBC Sport's Personality of the Year at the arena, possibly joining with Edinburgh in a bid to host the Tour de France sometime in the future. As we've seen the popularity of cycling in Yorkshire being boosted, as well as their local economy, and we have many keen cyclists in our region and city. European gymnastic events at the arena, as this is a sport with a growing audience and could be fronted by someone like Amy Tinkler. We all know that Magic Weekend, the Rugby World Cup and the Olympic Games did well at St James' Park. So could we build on that with maybe an annual pre-season football tournament, which would link with Sir Bobby Robson's charity? This could start in July 2019 on the 10th anniversary of his death. And then the Tall Ships Race is very popular, so we would like to bid for this again. But what we really want to see is a healthy life for everyone in our great city. And that includes a vibrant and inclusive cultural life. So can we have some answers to these questions, please? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor Higgins?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't propose to respond to councillor Faulkner's usual blitz of figures, which I think are often designed to cower us into submission on this side of the council chamber. But I will try to add to his, I will try to add to his Groundhog Day as best I can with a few, with a few observations of my own. I would just like to speak in support of the budget proposals as presented this evening, Lord Mayor. What we have yet again is a clear indication of the contrast between the two sides of this council chamber. On this side, we have a balanced and realistic approach to the challenge of protecting the most vulnerable and safeguarding our most vital services at a time of ever-increasing cuts from central government, whilst the party opposite continues to present a random array of populist ideas aimed simply at easy headlines in the local media or to feed their focused newsletters. In this context, it is therefore, it comes therefore as no great surprise that school crossing patrols and litter bins figure prominently in their amendments placed before council this evening. At a previous council meeting, members opposite even went so far as to make the offensive suggestion that taking the difficult decision to remove the funding for crossing patrols indicated somehow a lack of care for the wellbeing of our children by the Labour council. As I said at the time, Lord Mayor, nothing could be further from the truth. And this is reflected in our determination to safeguard our frontline staff engaged in the challenging role of child protection in our budget proposals, particularly in the aftermath of Operation Sanctuary. And this will remain a future priority. We are also working on school travel plans that are designed not only to safeguard children on their journey to and from school, but also improve the environment through the reduction of car use on the daily school run. The need to rationalise our litter bins and the cost savings associated with this have been well received by the majority of the public and are seen as a practical and realistic way to maintain environmental standards at a time of significant reductions to our workforce. These measures are coupled to imaginative partnership work with projects such as the Scotswood Community Garden in my own ward and similar projects elsewhere to engage with the wider public and bring about the behaviour change that we seek on litter and other environmental issues. The suggestion from the party opposite that we simply increase the number of bins in the city is naive in the extreme, unsustainable and fails totally to acknowledge the existing and mounting pressure on our workforce, who continue to do such a wonderful job in increasingly difficult circumstances. We continue to have a proud record in avoiding further cuts to our library services that have become a national symbol of the devastating impact of successive coalitionatory government cuts in recent years, and which are such a vital resource to so many, particularly in the more disadvantaged communities in our city. And this again is reflected in our budget proposals presented this evening. Lord Mayor, in the past, and in fact, also this evening, we've heard suggestions from our position that we should again raid our vital financial resources to plug the gap created by cuts from government funding. And as the leader has pointed out, we've now seen the example of the Tory council in Northampton and the disastrous consequences of following such a reckless and short-sighted course of action. I would also remind colleagues that it was, of course, the party opposite that voted for an increase in council members allowances at a recent council meeting, despite our own opposition to such, at a time when we face so much pressure on maintaining our vital services in children and adult care. In conclusion, Lord Mayor, it is therefore abundantly clear that at this difficult and challenging time, it is only a Labour council that can be trusted to safeguard the interests of our city and communities throughout a period of continued austerity that undoubtedly lies ahead. We are the party that is for the many, not for the few, investing in a fairer future for our people, and I commend this budget to council this evening, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Higgins. Councillor Sheppard?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Once again, we are asked to debate and vote on decisions that change people's lives. It is less an argument about how much we get, we know it is not enough, and we know it is unfair. It is more a debate about what we do with the resources that we do have. Our amendments don't attempt to deny the difficulties in funding the council, but rather they attempt to make our city a nicer place to live and work. As colleagues will know, I'm the director of a couple of tech businesses. I therefore have a personal interest in the development of the technology sector in the North East and in Newcastle in particular. In the last two decades, the city has successfully attempted to refocus growth away from the traditional engineering disciplines I came to Newcastle to study, to instead create momentum towards the new emerging international technology sectors that are geography independent. And we have all needed to move at the times. In common with many businesses, my company's strategy was not to look to the South East of England for support and contracts, but to look across to the North Sea and beyond, sourcing ideas, talent, clients and components from a global base. Our European partners are as much our closest neighbours as are our businesses in Surrey or Edinburgh. Brexit has, as we all know, seriously damaged our prospects for becoming a technology-led region. I have personally seen this effect as uncertainty creates delay and staff look elsewhere. We must keep our city's economic strategy under constant review during these dynamically changing political times. There are things that we can influence and there are things that we can change. I welcome the city's continued lobbying to retain our region's position in Europe in an attempt to minimise the macroeconomic impact of Brexit. I also welcome the apparent general agreement in the UK and Europe should continue to play a central role in the collaborative international research effort, which I am sure will be a huge relief to our universities. Although international schemes are as naught if the staff are unavailable to undertake the research. One of the significant challenges that we first faced as far as long as I have worked here is the availability of talent. Sadly, we still lose too many excellent homegrown graduates to the South East. And we don't attract enough internal migrants like me to remain after their studies to make their homes in the North East. Skills are essential to the future prosperity of the region of our city. It must therefore be of great concern when we propose to change skills funding for any level of attainment. I note the implied hope that Newcastle futures funding can be maintained through other routes. But I think we need to do better than that. And I hope a commitment can be found to underwrite these costs if funding is unavailable elsewhere. We also need concrete proposals to allow the free movement of skilled and talented people as widely as possible. I must admit, I find it difficult to keep track of the Labour Party's position on the free movement of people within a single market. However, I would like to know that the leader of council will attempt to persuade his colleagues at a national level of the need of talent, not just in the tech centre sector, but in healthcare, hospitality and for all parts of our economy. I continue to, I welcome the continued support of Science Central. How could I not give my continued engagement with it? However, in order to attract and retain people in businesses to the city, we need to present an attractive face. And that is one of the reasons why we have chosen to present our proposed amendments. I therefore urge colleagues to support the intention to create a nicer place to live by supporting our amendments as set out by councillor Faulkner. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sheppard. Councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor, okay, we've listened to councillor Faulkner's stream of consciousness speech and councillor Huddart's attempts to somehow turn this council into some kind of scrutiny meeting. Sorry, this is reality, council. What we have before us tonight is a safe, thoughtful budget for next year and future years, which has been subject to a rigorous process and robust challenge. But it still means we can't plug the growing funding gaps we face and continue to have to cut services or stop them altogether, or even increase charges. Now, I suspect that, like me, many of you are not surprised that the Conservative government is a callous one. No argument there. Who was it who helped them bring in these so-called austerity measures? The yellow peril sitting opposite. Councillor Faulkner referred to the austerity donkey. Well, I have to say, from my point of view, it's still kicking the hell out of this city. I personally am more than content that the leader of this council moves the budget. I see it as being that important to every resident of this city. Council, our entire social infrastructure is being shredded. Up and down the country, we do see the ruinous effects of austerity. The costs are terrible. Women and low-income groups have been affected most. Northamptonshire's bankruptcy, because that's what it is, that the leader referred to, was decided in Westminster. The evidence is clear. Westminster needs to change course and start spending. And that does not mean simply palming off more responsibility to local councils for making cuts. We need money, fairness and decency for our residents and communities. Our people are not just faced with loss of council services and support. Benefit cuts, benefit changes and the disastrous impact of universal credit on some of the poorest people in the country. Yeah, jobs have been created, but at what cost? They're mainly part-time, temporary and insecure. Now, that is a very warped use of public money, and it's not even effective. Real spend per head of population has fallen and it's been particularly felt by vulnerable people, even as the population grows older and more fragile. Yes, council, we have a legal obligation to set balanced budget and it's getting harder year on year. Look at the I I As in the report. Funding is declining and need is rising. We must cut some services to deliver those required by those most in need. Do you know, I despair at what councillor Taylor said about our shared, recent shared services agreement. That's a specific agreement between two councils. I don't know whether she doesn't know that we have a collaborative procurement arrangement across 12 councils in this region, where we work to deliver better quality goods and services to our residents, saving pots of money. And it's all detailed in the Nipo Council's reports. Now, and what response do we get from the group opposite? Nothing significant, that's for sure. Not fair or using reasonable care. Four of their amendments, excluding the third one, rely on spending of the airport dividend. It's one-off money, council. Not expected and unlikely to recur. And what do they do? Propose to use it on revenue spending for one year. What of the future? Do we just stop it in 2019? That's not fit for purpose, council. As for amendment three, heh, that's a good headline for their magazine, isn't it? That's all it's good for, though. Taking 2.6 million from currently unplanned capital receipts. We on this side always have a plan. In fact, we've got lots of them. What about housing, homelessness, neighbourhoods? They all demand our attention. Not a 100,000 pounds bung towards, it's like the government bung to the D U P to keep it in power, which is presumably what they're hoping for in May, while what I would say is fat chats. It doesn't add up and we're not going to fall for it. So make the right decision, council. Support the budget proposals unamended. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Councillor Cott?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you to all the contributors. Setting the council's budget, I think, is the most serious thing that we undertake every year, and I've been to a number of these. And it always distresses me, the amount of bickering and party politics which interferes with the ability of setting a budget. The opposition amendments are intended to be helpful. They're intended to enhance what the city council is providing, but I'll come back to those in a minute. But it is clear that there's a lot of unnecessary defensiveness on the ruling group's side and a lot of self-satisfaction in what has been put together. And yet, there is great dissatisfaction. People I talk to on a daily, weekly basis in the area that I represent tell me quite frequently how dissatisfied they are with the way in which the council is delivering its services and the way in which it is self-satisfied and does not involve local communities in decision-making, despite all the rhetoric. It always amused me for a number of years under this administration, in the members' gentleman's toilets next to the hot air machine was the Let's Talk advertisement. And I think that sums up a number of issues. But let's be serious, because this is a serious matter. And I do accept that the council is in a very serious situation. And local government funding does need to be reformed. And I think that our two parties are very much of a similar mind about that. We are in a situation where year after year, budgets become less and less. And I just wanted to say a little bit about some of the issues for children and young people and their families, because this is an area which is always sensitive. There is actually a lot of support cross-party around these issues. We do have some concerns that year after year, we understand why this happens. You look at reducing the budgets, there's no option to do otherwise, of course. But there is, there are some sensitivities around that, particularly at the moment with the increase in looked-after children by 7.5% in the last 12 months. And there's an opportunity, I think, to engage more with the voluntary sector. I was quite interested with the comments of NCBS in relation to a number of issues. One was, of course, the issue which councillor Faulkner made reference to, and the issue about the impact of last year's budget. We still don't really know enough about that. They do have some concern about the loss of support the voluntary sector can provide with some of these cuts. And there's a plea there, I think, to work with the voluntary sector more in relation to things like placements, using the voluntary sector as a conduit for that and working more effectively together. I've always thought this local authority, certainly under this administration, hasn't made enough use of... made enough use of its, of its social capital, its moral capital, its ethical capital in relation to working with the voluntary sector. Meetings I attend where the voluntary sector are present, they are polite, they want to work with the council, often the council doesn't seem to want to engage with them in the, in the way in which they could. And of course, they are our eyes and ears on the ground, they are so important. Let's make more use of the voluntary sector. I actually agree with some of the points councillor Taylor raised about more joint working, but maybe there's an opportunity there to work more with the voluntary sector. Of course, the council is doing a lot of things. The Life Chances project you have targeted to work with vulnerable young people, you of course have the Better Care Fund, there are a lot of things that are going on, a plethora of initiatives for supporting early intervention prevention. Of course, some of that relates to specific money that comes from central government, which you seem to like to forget. I just wanted to say one other issue, and that is about the amendments. As I was saying before, the amendments are indeed intended to be helpful, not a hindrance to the council. And how, I was quite shocked earlier, one of the amendments, amendment three, we were talking about the, the issue about locally determined budgets. We used to do this for years and it used to work very well, but of course, this council, this administration has reduced the capacity for, for any influence on budgets for councillors in wards. It's, you know, residents out there must be saying things like, what, what is the point of local councils if they can't influence budgets locally? If you centralise things to such a degree, I understand why you do it, because of budget cuts and, and also I think you have a tendency to want to centralise services rather than allow local councils to make decisions in their communities. I think this is something that we do need to look at very, very carefully. I would like to see more money spent locally, local councils having more say over how budgets are spent and to work with their local communities to actually achieve the best spending of those things. I would have thought that the ruling group would be in favour of that particular proposal. I can see the red light, so I will leave it there, but I, I am in favour of the amendments. I am slightly disappointed at the tone of the debate and I do hope it picks up in the remaining speeches. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Coates. Councillor Talbot.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm sorry to disappoint you councillor Coates, but I, I don't think the tone of the debate will improve in front, from what you think. The leader of the council has clearly articulated the dire financial position we face and what we are doing to manage it. The budget we have put forward tonight seeks to protect the most vulnerable while investing in the future of our city. The years of austerity, the unfair disproportionate cuts to our council budget have had a huge impact on our residents. We have tried to mitigate that impact. We are still here, still managing our finances with considerable financial acumen, unlike some councils that we know of. I wonder, though, if we would still be here if we had adopted any of the previous budget amendments put forward by the Lib Dems, which never seemed to recognise the severity of our financial position. Maybe that's because they contributed to it and remorse is clouding their memory. Perhaps I could help jog it for them. For five long years, between 2010 and 15, the Lib Dems acted as pound shop Tories in supporting the enactment of some of the most punitive assaults on the poor that we have seen. Cuts to the NHS, the bedroom tax, tripling of tuition fees, welfare reform, which is a euphemism for cuts, which included benefit cuts for the terminally ill and cuts to local government. The amendments they have put forward tonight follow the same old worn path, demonstrating a lack of understanding about the financial position, but with lots of opportunities for headlines in focus. Their approach seems to reflect a new kind of financial model, which is based upon finding a rainbow, following it to the end, emptying the crock of gold and using that as-yet-unknown amount to fund whatever might be funded for a year and then stop funding it. What's going to happen then? Where are the difficult decisions that we have to make? You're not making them. You are disrespecting residents in your, in the way that you're approaching this and telling residents they can have this and we'll reverse it, but then not telling them they can only have it for a year. We will have lost £283 million by 2020. The gravity of the situation seems to elude them. How can this approach be seen as anything other than ill-prepared, ill-thought-through and unsustainable? If this is all the Lib Dems have to offer, then the paucity of their ideas is exposed for all to see. I think councillor Kemp has, with his usual focus, demolished your amendments and exposed them as opportunists. I think I agree with him. I thought it was a very good point. And frankly, I'd rather stick pins in my eyes and vote for these amendments, so please support the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Talbot. Councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. When I got an inkling through the newspapers, not through council papers, that our very own Paul Daniels would be producing a million pounds for his magical top hat tonight, I started to worry about Greeks bearing gifts. Why is there the Labour administration suddenly trying to demonstrate momentum in service provision with play areas and spring cleans? Could it possibly be because there's an election in the offing? In Parklands, we've been engaging with officers on these subjects for over three years. There have been two reports on the condition of play areas and the play value of equipment. Councilors have been prepared to countenance, to save costs, the closure of tiny areas supplied by the original builders, which contain virtually nothing and which are no longer used. In return, local people would want some improvements to the best of them. Why has there been no action on an agreed improvement strategy? Because there's been no money, even though the city council spends £1,650 every minute of every day. Perhaps here I should declare a non-perpetual special interest as a grandfather, whose girls are still in the age range to be interested in infant's play areas. The reality is that almost all play areas in the city are aimed at little ones. Nobody is much interested in the young teens, who are prey to ASB-inducing behaviours or adventurous sub-teens. Suddenly, abracadabra, is a million pounds to grab headlines rather than help for the many across the city, which we propose. We want clean streets. The Labour administration's policy has been to sweep away about two-thirds of litter bins rather than rubbish. I have yet to meet in Parklands any Labour supporter or anybody else who thinks that this is a good idea. Of course, though not initially consulted, councils have been working hard with officers to refine locations and collection schedules. As recently as yesterday, we've had yet another request for more bins in the ward, which will have the most voters in the city on the 3rd of May, and we'll be pursuing that. But now, you'll like this, not for a lot of time, but you'll like it for a short time. A quick fix with more than an eye in the ballot box, a spring clean, not cleanliness for all seasons, one-off spectacular spin, not momentum for permanent change, such as that we proposed in our amendments. We'll see cleaner streets for a brief term, but once the election is out of the way, unless, as we're working towards, the city votes to sweep Labour away, it'll be poor old dirty old tune again. And while I agree with the leader on Brexit, Lord Mayor, I support the amendments.
Thank you councillor Ashby. Councillor Coates.
Councillor Faulkner self-confessed to a groundhog day speech, so here's mine, here. We've got a series of amendments before us which require us to use a one-off dividend, whatever anybody says, for a number of things. But it begs that very important question, doesn't it? What do you fund them with next year, when if you haven't actually noticed, we have to save another £15.9 million then? So you'll have to stop all those things then and you won't have done the play or ledger facilities either. It's a failure to understand what the real reason for this relentless tide of austerity actually is and who's responsible for it, and we've heard about, enough about that already. But it's been misleading and whether that's been deliberately misleading, I'll leave that for others to judge. The same argument applies to the reserves, of which, again, we've heard plenty of this evening. I understand there was something like 6.9% of the net revenue budget, they're on the very low side indeed. In Leamington, I think I've counted up to seven suggestions for what we could do with the reserves, what they could be spent on, including reducing the rates, I don't, you know, the things. The demand for the reserves never ends, does it? But then, of course, we'd have little or no reserves, when we're actually required to have them. And they're actually, as we've seen, very small in the first place. We've heard about Northamptonshire County Council. We've heard that they've been financially mismanaged. One of the contributions to that financial mismanagement has been the relentless use of their reserves. And that's what we're being asked to do. The argument never ends until, like Northamptonshire Council, you're bankrupt. But we have remorselessly rising demands, notably and especially from adult social care, which is what people never, very few people never actually see. But that's what costs us our budget. Now, prudent use of reserves also demands that they be replaced in future years, when they're so low in the first place. So how are we going to do that? We've heard about the bins this evening. I think we've had about six complaints in Leamington, all of which we've dealt with. What we're finding less easy to deal with is the effects of austerity on our more vulnerable and underprivileged populations. We've heard some remarks about the crash and again, to return to the groundhog day theme, I've said this before, I really had no idea that Gordon Brown was so influential, that he could cause a crisis in Portugal, Italy, Greece, Spain, in the United States itself, for example. Yes, Northern Rock, which, which is all part of it. And that was the groundhog day interruption from councillor Stone as well. So actually during the course of his councillor four speech, I actually thought he gave some pretty good reasons for, for maintaining the reserves, but I may have been mishearing you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Coates. Councillor Stone.
I hear I've as well received at Sunderland's budget meeting tonight as well, some obviously making an impact. Lord Mayor, as opposition transport spokesperson, I would like to talk about that Lib Dem favourite pavement politics. Councillor Forbes alluded in his comments to the, that the resident survey showed strong support for residents on street cleaning. Yes, that's true. They also show strong support for the, the, the morning to be done on street cleaning, I should say. They also show strong support for street repairs and there is growing dissatisfaction with the lack of maintenance that's been going on for several years now. The answer to councillor Donnelly's written question acknowledges under investment in highway maintenance. The truth is that the council has calculated the backlog of road and pavement maintenance in Newcastle is £140 million. Now, that's gone up from £116 million just before Christmas. There is no credible plan to tackle that, even though the resident survey shows it is a priority and a concern of residents. And as an aside, Lord Mayor, I note that all we have seen of the resident survey details so far is the council's press release on this in November. Despite repeated requests by the opposition to officers, there is still no sign of the ward-level breakdown of results made available to us. One would almost think, Lord Mayor, the council doesn't want councillors and residents to know what these figures show because they know they're not very good news for them. Neither is the scorecard on, on the road and pavement maintenance happy reading in any way whatsoever. A roads, 21% of them in the city are in red or amber condition. B roads, 25% are in red or amber condition. C roads, 22% red or amber. Local roads, i.e. neighbourhood, local neighbourhood roads, 49% are red or amber condition. And despite this, there has been no planned budget for ward-level maintenance since 2015/16. So how is the council going to tackle this problem? We're setting out a modest amendment to improve award level, to improve and provide award-level budgets of £100,000, which is only a small step, we acknowledge, but it will be well received by the residents of the city. But a genuinely innovative and reforming council might look at further options, more radical options. I'm not proposing that we would move to this, down this route overnight or even at all, but I think we should at least look at some of what some of the cities are doing. If we look at what Labour-run Leeds City Council are doing, they're proposing, and they are consulting right now on introducing a clean air charge for their city whereby HGVs in the, in the area within the Ring Road, the outer Ring Road of Leeds and the M621, will pay a £100 daily charge for using those roads. Now, I'm not proposing we go down that road immediately or at all, but we need to look at what the impact of these kind of charges might be. But these, these sorts of schemes could cut congestion emissions and they will certainly cut the wear on the city's roads. Lib Dems think, Lib Dems think that the revenue from such a, such a charge, if it was considered, could be split between support for green public transport and in tackling Labour's aforementioned highways maintenance backlog. And while we're talking about clean air, we can, there's also increasing demand out there from groups in the city to, for the council to justify the continuation of the Live After Five free parking subsidy for car use. We await details in the very near future of the council's clean air plan and we urge them to at least consider some of these helpful suggestions about how they could raise funds to tackle this, these backlog and the problems of, of, of clean air that we have in the city. The principle has already been established. Their plan was to use Bus Lane Camber fine, excuse me, I've got something in my throat there, to fund improvements to the city centre highway network. But so far, all we have seen of their so-called city centre highway improvements are a rather grotty and squalid new public space outside St Thomas's Church. I hope there is more momentum on improving that in the very near future. Tonight, we are to choose between using the airport, we're both using, we're both talking about the same thing in many respects, we're talking about using the airport dividend reserve money and the windfall from that. Labour proposing to use that for the few, the opposition are proposing to use that for the many. Now, we are not opposed, of course, to investing in play areas. During the last few years, the council failing to maintain play areas, Lib Dem councillors have led local efforts to raise funds to improve the shabby state of those local play areas. In my area alone, we have led the efforts and we've helped secure funding for new equipment at Coach Lane, at Hayden Grange, at Iris Brickfield and at Paddy Freeman's, because we, we've not had any council budget for it and we've worked to find our own solutions to that with the local community. Labour are proposing a cynical elections tweakner, but their record in recent years on play areas has been poor. Lord Mayor, I hope residents will bear in mind that in the record of Labour neglecting play areas in recent years and how that contrasts markedly with the local Lib Dem record of working to support them. It's an important reminder, Lord Mayor, this Labour's budget passes, what the city may gain from the swings, it will certainly lose on the roundabout repairs. Finally, Lord Mayor, I'd like to make one final point. We've heard a lot of talk tonight from the pub party opposite about their horror, their absolute horror at the idea that financial reserves might be used and they're talking about the, the nightmare, the nightmare scenario of bankruptcy as, as put forward by North, Northamptonshire County Council. Now, I can't help contrasting this sudden fiscal poverty and this sudden concern for sound financial management with their on-constant calls over recent years for fences, borrow more money, to borrow more money, to borrow more money, to borrow money. They can't keep on borrowing more money and then protest about other people getting into danger of bankruptcy because they're the same thing, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Stone. Councillor Donnelly.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Another Labour pickpocket budget, while the council reserves total £83.3 million. The administration even admits to plans to raid residents' and businesses' pockets heavily and often in the future. The cabinet member for inclusive growth said in his report to scrutiny last month, making the city an attractive destination for businesses and families is essential. As we prepare to raise more of our revenues through business rates and council tax from 2020, Labour councillors have forgotten the effects of compounding the 5% tax rise is inflationary and harsher than it sounds. Hit by past, present and future intended rises, council taxpayers will be soon much worse off. The council now appears mean and extortionate to many. Yet the administration has no hesitation in funding the million for a pre-election city clean-up, committing £3 million towards the cost of its grand and unrealistic plans for Northumberland streets, every year ignoring over £1 million left uncollected in council tax, spending over £1 million a year on interest to keep a prestigious civic centre, borrowing heavily at taxpayers' expense to fund its excessive capital projects. How can the council expect to be taken seriously by the public and staff under the policy of a fair city whilst imposing a huge 5% tax rise and giving the already lavishly paid chief executive a 4.5% pay rise and staff only 2%? The public is likely to say that is grossly unfair and rightly so. It is time for a reality check. The council must stop hissing residents with financial burdens. They are ever more hard-pressed to miss. The budget does not show the much-hyped financial prudence that the council claims. It impoverishes city taxpayers and they will leave there much less to spend in the future. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Donnelly. Councillor Avery.
So I've been trying to, to honour councillor Coates' request to, to improve the, the tone of this debate and have therefore been spotting a few things I agree with. Sadly, I could find nothing. I even remotely... Sadly, I could find nothing I even remotely agreed with in councillor Donnelly's speech. And once again, he's missed an opportunity to apologise for the disrespect he's shown to the city. I would again suggest that he do this before accusing others of things. It's just frankly ridiculous. But anyway, on those things that I agree with, I actually agree with almost everything that councillor Shepherd said. I even agreed with councillor Stone when he talked about the success of HGV charges in Leeds. I agreed with councillor Ashby that we should have more services for pre-teens and older children. And I agreed with councillor Cot about the importance of children's services. I think that the question, therefore, is why have they not chosen some of these serious pressing problems as the target of their amendments? And unfortunately, they have lectured us about everyday services, but they're only interested in everyday services for some people, right? They are interested in the everyday services for people who live in Gosforth, relatively well-off and relatively good situations. They're not interested in the everyday situation of a refugee. They're not interested in the everyday situation of a child in care. They're not interested in the everyday situation of someone with difficult and complex needs being penalised by government they were part of, being forced to go to awful appointments to the DWP. They're not interested in those everyday situations. They're not interested in the everyday situations of the neediest, worst-off people in the city. They're interested in the everyday situation of the people they think are going to vote for them. No one has ever lost an election by spending more money on bins. No one has ever lost an election by spending more money on streets, by spending more money on the things that people see. But unfortunately, those are not the worst problems that exist in our city. There are some people with very severe problems, and the Lib Dems seem to have little to no interest in them, with the honourable exceptions I noted above. And indeed, councillor Gallagher, and I just want to, I live around the corner from Jesmond Dean Nursery. It was not a green space. It never was. A green field requires you to have a field. There was never a field in Jesmond Dean Nursery. But this is just frankly ridiculous. The idea that they set off council greenhouses is in some way, you know, any way equivalent to a public park is just completely ridiculous, and they need to stop making themselves look foolish by continuing to repeat it. Right, but in my remaining time, I want to talk about something that I happen to know a great deal about, which is school crossing patrols. Because I was run over as a child living in Jesmond, it was entirely my fault, but like many children, I made foolish decisions when crossing a road. Then, while an undergraduate student, I chose to be a school crossing patrol guard, working when I was in Leeds at a local primary school. I took great pleasure and pride in the job I did, which was surprisingly difficult. Large people from wealthy areas and big BMWs tried to run me over on a weekly basis. It was a difficult job, but it was an important one, right? But I recognise that the pay I got from the council was a relatively small part of my motivation in doing that job. It's because I wanted to help people. And it was something that I would have done as a volunteer and that many people in other parts of the world do on a voluntary basis, right? The problem with their amendment is they are seeking to put in money for one year only, where people have already made other plans, where they've left this service or are about to, where people have moved on to get other jobs. They have no plan to recruit traffic guards, crossing patrol guards. They have no plan to retain those people. They have no plan to deal with what was already a massive problem before the service was removed, which is difficulty in filling posts, because this was a job that does not have social hours, that is not well-paid. It is, in short, in no way a solution to having children cross roads safely. It is just gesture politics, right? It is not a solution that will bring people in, it is not a solution to find volunteers, to work with community groups, it is in no way a solution, right? And having been lectured last year by members opposite that we did not care about children, it is utterly ridiculous for them to introduce this amendment, that we do almost nothing, even if we passed it, because we could not find the people to fill the posts. And even if we did find those people, we would then have to sack them a year later. This is completely ridiculous, despicable, and the Members' Opposition should be frankly ashamed of themselves.
Thank you, councillor Avery. Councillor Jackie Slusenger.
This will be my last council meeting before I leave in May, and while supporting my colleagues' amendments, I would like to make a special valedictory budget plea on behalf of the West End Food Bank before I do so. I am the longest-serving trustee and have been involved in many crises over the years, but despite that fact, the food bank has grown to become one of the largest in the country. Most weeks, and particularly during school holidays and Christmas, it feeds and supports up to 1,000 people, including children. We not only give out food, we provide hot meals twice a week, and have developed a good system of advice and support, such as housing, work, and employment, to those who are most wanting, in order to give them a fresh start so they will not need the resources of the food bank. This is all achieved by many committed and hard-working volunteers for which we are very grateful. Despite all these efforts, funding is, as always, an ongoing problem. We rely solely on charitable grants and donations from the public, either in the form of individual donations or group support, who are extremely generous. We are rarely able to look beyond several months financially. We have just appointed a new chief executive following the retirement of Michael Nixon, who has worked tirelessly to improve conditions. And the chair of the trustees is a relative new vicar at St Bead's Church, who is very involved in the local community and very committed to the food bank, and we value his support. The food bank is feeding and supporting people in this city, our city, and I am now asking the council to find the funds to make a long-term commitment to help us to do that so that we can continue to carry on with our work without the constant worry that we may not be able to feed those who have the greatest need. Our aim is not to have the biggest food bank in the country, but to steadfastly continue to support everyone who comes through the door seeking our help. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Slusenger. Councillor Greenhalve.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before I attended my first budget meeting last year, one of the Members' Opposition, who I won't embarrass by saying so, said that he found these the most embarrassing of all the council meetings we do, because members get up and they make overly political statements, and it gets a bit embarrassing in the meeting, and I think the Lib Dems have lived up to that tonight. I have to say, I agree with one of the comments from councillor Cot when he said that he got to thinking of what is the purpose of a councillor. I just happen to add the word Lib Dem in there on quite a few occasions on these nights. The budget they've been brought forward does two things. Firstly, it shows our commitment, despite the trying circumstances, despite the unfair, the disproportionate cuts, which the party opposite do have to accept that they played their part in. You had ministers, yeah, you had a minister in the local government department for one time during it. What did you do to say to your colleagues, to say to the chief secretary to the Treasury, Danny Alexander, to say to the deputy prime minister, your leader, this is unfair, this is having an impact on our city? I didn't see any focus leaflet saying we've called on Nick Clegg to stop his cuts. I didn't see any focus leaflet saying we've called on Danny Alexander to stop these cuts. All I saw was time and time again, supporting the government. So as well as protecting the most vulnerable, what this budget does is look at transforming services so they are long-term, more sustainable. And one example of that is housing. I think we've got an excellent record on housing. The leader of the council touched on this, that shelter reporters that were exceeding our targets for the delivery of affordable housing. I'm proud that in my own ward, down on the old Dumbling Crescent, the Garth development is going to have a block for older people, it's going to have six bungalows, and it's going to have sheltered accommodation for adults with learning difficulties. That, for me, is a fantastic development that we're bringing forward that will also help us with our budget. But more importantly, it will help individual residents to live their best life possible in their community, which is something that is so important teaching every one of them. I also just want to touch on something that councillor Faulkner seemed to imply that we should use, well, he didn't imply, he said outright that we should be using more reserves, but at the same time said that it doesn't look like there's going to be a let-up in the level of cuts that are coming to the council. Yes, they are a rainy day fund, but unless councillor Faulkner's aware of some sunshine coming out from the government in the next year or so, maybe we should perhaps leave them just in case we get more cuts coming this way, because we want to protect our citizens as much as possible. I wasn't actually planning on getting up and saying anything about that, Lord Mayor. I decided to speak after councillor Donnelly stood up once again and didn't apologise, despite the fact that he's now been asked, and I'm saying this as vice-chair of Standards, he's now been asked on a number of occasions to apologise from Standards Committee. He's had letters from the independent chair of Standards Committee. He talks much about being an independent, let's note that the independent chair of Standards Committee has written to him on occasions asking him to apologise, and that it only came to Standards Committee because independent members had found that it should go forward. So I just thought we'd know that, because it's the first time councillor Donnelly's spoken since, and, you know, we know how political he can be on these sort of things. So I just wanted to put that on the record, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Greenhalve. Councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And before I start my speech, can I just thank everybody who's generously contributed to my sponsorship for Mind? And I know this is a cause that has great support across the entire chamber, so thank you for that. Interesting debates, probably more interesting than usual in some ways, slightly less yab oo. But if I could try and summarise some of the majority parties' attacks on this side is, A, saying that we're responsible for the cuts, and two, this debate over the use of one-off reserves, as councillor Mendleson said, it's only for a year anyway. So I'm glad I was speaking after councillor Avery, because during one of his previously typically modest, self-deprecating speeches, I thought I'd have a look at the alternative. I thought to myself, what would Jeremy do? So here in the council chamber, I looked up the Labour Party 2017 manifesto, and I wonder how many people in the majority side actually know what Labour Party policy is on central government grants? Took me a while to find it, because when I went through the main document, I found a sentence saying, we will increase funding to local government. Okay, that sounds good, doesn't say how much. So I went to the appendix. I looked down through all the spending commitments, all that set out by Mr McDonald, very proudly, couldn't find a single one that referred to central government grants. And I thought, that's very odd, why is it not there? And then I spotted it, Lord Mayor. At the very end, I found a footnote, this is a footnote in an appendix, that said, we will make a one-off payment to local government. One-off, for one year only, as councillor Mendleson has said. When I took the figure and spread it out, assuming that this would, given that we had, as pointed out, disproportionately taken the share of the cuts on local government, if it was redistributed the way it was cut, then factoring in unfunded cost pressures, to use the majority group's own phrase, that one-off contribution came to 5% of the reduction in the local authority grant since 2010. So what the Labour Party is saying with this wonderful anti-austerity manifesto that was trumpeted, they are saying that 95% of the cuts made to the local government grant are okay. And that 5%, remember, is for one year only. There was something about reviewing local government finance, which I think every party has promised to do, nobody has actually delivered yet, but after that, we'd be back to making cuts on those cost pressures because there was no long-term commitment. So I just wanted to say this to bring some context, some factual context, to some of these debates, and maybe certain members of the majority group should make sure that their high horse is not, in fact, a donkey.
Thank you, councillor Kane. I have two requests left to speak, so if anybody else wants to put their name on the list, can they do so now? Can I call councillor Stokel Walker, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think I'll continue the councillor Kane theme of factual, because one of the discussions we've had this evening has been, much has been made about austerity, and it's been bandied around. And I think it's about time that we put an end to, or put a nail into, the falsehood that the Lib Dems keep putting around. Actually, it's fake news they keep putting around. And it's about who's responsible for austerity. Well, I'll give you some facts and figures which aren't fake news, and then at the end of it, you can make your own decision in terms of who's responsible. But if we look at one of the measures of austerity, which is the percentage of national debt to gross domestic product of a nation, or GDP, then in 2010, which is, remember, the year that Labour left, the national debt of the UK stood at £1 trillion, which was 75.6% of GDP. By comparison, Germany's was 80.9%, and France's was 81.6%, post-significantly higher than the UK. Now, let's fast forward after five years of the Lib Dems getting into bed with the Tories, and then a further two years of the Tories by themselves. And by 2017, which is the last date we have the figures for, the national debt had risen to £1.83 trillion, it increased by... You know, I would really like to measure your IQ, but I don't do fractions, so shut up. So as I was saying, it had risen to £1.83 trillion, which was an increase of over £800 million, or 71%. And was now 88.8% of GDP. That's what the Lib Dems and the Tories have done for austerity. By comparison, just to give you the same comparators, France's in 2017 was 84.6%, and Germany's 81.9%. So whereas theirs had been higher in 2010, by 2017, they were quite significantly lower. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stokel Walker. Can I call on councillor David Slusenger, please?
Lord Mayor, thank you. I can recall the day when John O'Shea, as leader of the Labour Party in the day, complained that, holding up the budget book, that it was too much information. Sadly, those days are long gone, and we have to fight for every scrap of information that we require. It's concerned me all year, Lord Mayor, I'm sure it's concerned everybody else, the costs of the refurbishment of this building and where it's going to end. The figures have escalated, but in fact, there is good reason, and I'll come back to that. Up till now, all we've had is, don't worry, in 25 years, it'll be good. Well, today I received a briefing note, and frankly, the figures, if they come right, there's nothing to be concerned about figuratively, and that should be communicated. But there are problems as to the separation of the legislature, the decision-makers, and the judiciary, and the tenants, the courts in the main, have been told to be careful in that respect. What we need, Lord Mayor, is a report, a full report, setting out what came to me on a briefing note, and it's nothing to be ashamed of, but there are concerns, particularly as to the separation, for people whose cases will be heard in court, some of them are very delicate, for example, adoption, and the last thing we want them to say, anyone to think that it's a council court that's going to hear their case. So a report, please, a full report, on the pros and the cons, the cash flow, et cetera. Nothing to be ashamed of, but let us have it, as this is the way it should be done. In order to get the information out, Lord Mayor, my view is that the cabinet system just is failing a democratic process. I'm not asking for a return to a complete committee system, but it's certainly something that needs to be considered if new members, younger members, are going to have the information that they require. So a report also on a return to a partial committee system. The casework that came my way only this week, Lord Mayor, indicates the sort of problems that a committee system would never have allowed to happen. I'm speaking of a 42-year-old who, at the age of 16, due to family troubles, found himself outside... outside our housing office. They sent him to Hillcourt in Pitt Street and social services managed to resolve the difficulties in the family and after about 10 or 11 days, he was returned to the family and by and large, that has worked. Recently, he applied for council housing, only to be told that this wasn't possible to progress because he had a debt for previous rent. He had no knowledge of this, no understanding of this. What happened was that, having arrived at Pitt Street, they sent him or debited him with £117 and 67 pence and unless he paid that money forthwith, his application was in abeyance. This wouldn't have happened if we'd had a committee system, I'm quite sure. The issues would have been resolved. He was a minor, 16, he couldn't make a contract, he should have been held with housing benefit if the money was applicable. There wouldn't have been any arrears in that case and it's just beyond me that 25 years later, we can still be telling him, well, we've written it off, we're not expecting, you know, we want the money, but if we don't get it, it doesn't really trouble us too much, but notwithstanding, because of your arrears, you're not going to get any help from us. I did make contact in the end with someone who could make a decision and the matter will be resolved, but a committee system, Lord Mayor, would not have allowed that. A committee system would not have allowed that. So two reports, please. Two reports, please. One, on the refurbishment costs, the funding and the separation of the council and the courts to be built. And a report, two, on the reinstatement in a modified form of a committee system.
Thank you councillor Schlesinger. Can I call on councillor Hazel Stevenson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I say, over the many years of austerity, I am proud to say that Newcastle, in spite of reductions and grants and funding, has always, under this Labour administration, looked forward, forward planned with reality, grasping the difficult decisions with both honesty and reality. You may laugh, but that is a fact, listening to and involving residents within the process. It is never easy working with budgets such as we inherited when we took over the council again. And the pressures have been unsurmountable, not least on officers working in the council, on councillors across all of the chamber representing residents, but also on those very residents that we seek to serve. This budget before us seeks to deal with things that we cannot, under very difficult circumstances, deal with in a way that we once did, due to the lack of funding. We have tried to come forward with things in an honest and fair way and given information to residents to understand the situation that we in Newcastle are facing. Maybe some of our colleagues in the chamber tonight do not fully grasp this, but I know many, many residents do understand. They do understand because they are living it day in, day out. The amendments seek this evening, sadly, to appear to me to be populist soundbites, which are very short-term and not forward-looking. We know the situation, we've been told, is not going to get any better with this government. We have to be forward-looking for the sake of our residents. We have to use all the funding we can in a prudent, fair and long-term way, meeting all our legal obligations. We need to treat our residents with dignity and, as I say, in a fair and honest way. Over many years, Newcastle has led the way. Within the local authorities, we've always grasped the nettle and made the tough decisions first and we don't stop doing that at this point in time. We work with reality and we work with the complex issues. I would support this budget and I would endorse this budget this evening to council for these very reasons. And I would just like to say, this council should always be treated with due respect. Sadly, this is not always the case and shame on the individuals or the people who do not do that. This council is bigger than any one of us and it would be good for people to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stevenson. I'll now call on the members who reserve their right to speak, councillor Ramon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Before I start, I just want to say on behalf of our group and I'm sure the whole chamber, it's fantastic to see my wardmate councillor Schlesinger back and in such great form. It's good to have you back. I'm pleased and very proud to second councillor Fulton's amendments to the budget. These amendments look to redeploy relatively modest sums of money to address key challenges faced by our Great North City. However, I am surprised that the leader of the council is so critical of these amendments. It isn't like we're proposing ideas that are really off-peace or looking to sink vast sums of money into non-priority areas or reserves, something his previous projects have done quite a lot, actually. The leader says that our amendments are a reckless use of resources, of reserves. However, his Director of Resources takes a different view. Following a very thorough and proper review, as councillor Fulton described, he's effectively said that, and I quote, "They don't adversely impact the council's financial plans." That's councillor Forbes' council plans. As a fellow Sipfer member, I know who I believe, I know who the city's residents will believe as well. The amendments cover three key areas: refuse, roads and pavements and child safety, so really key areas for our residents. On refuse, I'm really pleased that councillor Kemp has announced a £1 million spring clean. This is welcomed by us, although the fact he only moved to do this when prompted by the residents' survey was somewhat bizarre, given that our great city has had such a litter problem for so long. Even members opposite's social media feeds have flagged this up for months now and his own ward surgeries must have featured litter and waste at some point during the process. Anyway, it's happening. That's a really good thing. We're really pleased about that. However, under the current budget proposals, the million pounds would create a cleaner city in the coming months, as the leader says, for the great exhibition, but then it wouldn't be maintained much beyond that and the momentum gathered by this exercise will be lost. Our proposals include money to extend the scope of the spring clean and additional infrastructure and collections to effectively lock in the benefits of councillor Kemp's one-off exercise and get on top of our litter crisis long-term. On roads and pavements, we again look to fix the everyday first by investing to clear at least some of the backlog maintenance works in every ward that have been allowed to build up. This is not some lavish expense proposal by us. The backlog will not magically go away, going back to the Paul Daniels theme, and the maintenance bill will not disappear by simply ignoring it. Councillor Ainsley was on the news last night and repeats it tonight, and estimated the total repair bill to be £140 million. Surely the best way to begin to tackle this is to prioritise it in the budget, not just stand there and look north and blame the government. That never actually filled any potholes, unfortunately. Ours is a sensible investment proposal and one that we hope all ward councillors in the chamber can support, given it directly benefits their residents and starts to tackle the backlog in their ward. Our final investment and amendment is a modest investment needed to bring back school crossing patrols across the whole city. Councillor Forbes and councillor Kemp had harsh words for this, for us this year too, but in his latest report, the city's Director of Public Health describes the city's roads, and I quote, "As a dangerous place for children." I know it's the done thing in some areas of politics nowadays, Lord Mayor, to ignore experts in their field, but I'd expect this chamber to be far more intelligent and sensible and take action when our experts identify red risks such as this. In context, we're talking about a six-figure sum from a nine-figure overall budget, so please, let's do the right thing this time. We must get on top of child road safety in this city and fast. I'd certainly urge members opposite, who have brought petitions on this subject and who have had representations from residents in their wards, to think of this and the relatively small financial sum we're talking later when the vote comes. These amendments together are in the scheme of things, small changes to the substantive budget, but will make a big difference in areas that both residents tell us they care about and where our experts tell us we're at risk. Members opposite therefore have a choice. Either vote our amendments down on block because councillor Forbes says so, because he says in the document that we've lost £283 million. I assume, I assume this figure was missing from his opening remarks due to him listening to his Director of Resources and reading the objective review of this number prepared for finance budget scrutiny. I'd be more than happy to meet with councillor Forbes and show him through this and how he's overinflated this number in his report, which he has, and perhaps councillor Kilgaw could come along to the meeting as well because she's mentioned the £283 million tonight. Or, Lord Mayor, or members opposite have the choice tonight to vote for these small tweaks to the substantive budget that will make a big difference to the lives of those who put their faith in them two, three or four years ago now. So I'd say to all in the chamber, regardless of which side you sit, vote for these amendments and let's show the people of this city that as a council, we care about the things that they do. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ramon. Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Here we are again discussing another budget. Another year on, no change to austerity, Lord Mayor. We have the prospect of going it alone by 2020, but no real understanding of how the government will fill the gap. For me, politics is about choices and priorities and I believe the budget that's before us tonight reflects that. Lord Mayor, we don't have a monopoly on good ideas or solutions and we'll continue to learn, continue to look at all potential good ideas and we will continue to learn from elsewhere. Lord Mayor, can we also place on record our thanks to the many officers who've been involved in putting together the really thorough and comprehensive papers that are before us tonight? We don't often get the chance to thank officers. Lord Mayor, last year, as we all know, it was, it was the year when adult social care was in crisis. This year, it's nationally recognised that it's children's social care that's in crisis. And correcting councillor Taylor on her figures, she was talking about the £4.6 million overspend, I think, in the council's budget, which is not, Lord Mayor, in adult social care. Some of it is in children's social care and some of it is in the costs of waste, but there is full detail in the last quarterly report and the next quarterly report will be published at the end of this week, so you'll be able to see where we currently are. We are estimating a gap of that, which just reflects, Lord Mayor, the crisis in social care that we identify. Councillor Cotton talked about the importance of children's social care in his speech and like some of my colleagues, I'm really disappointed not to see an amendment on that. If he believes that, that we should be doing more, then I don't see the amendment before us tonight. And I do think, Lord Mayor, that the opposition need to learn about the difference between statutory and non-statutory services and maybe on this side, I could offer councillor Ramon an opportunity to talk to us about that. So far, we've had no support from the government in relation to children's social care and, Lord Mayor, as colleagues will know, I'm always optimistic, I'm always positive, but I'm not holding out which hope that these issues will be addressed. We have a great deal, Lord Mayor, to be proud of in our great city. More homes built than in the last 30 years, more jobs created, businesses are thriving, we're working on a plan around air quality, we're wanting to be a healthy city, we're improving digital connectivity, we are recognised by Stonewall for our excellent employment practices, people are supported by essential services and a number of colleagues, Lord Mayor, have reflected on the cooperative spirit over the last week from both staff and residents, I think, given the dreadful weather conditions. But, Lord Mayor, on this side of the council chamber, we also recognise that many people in our city are left behind and as councillor Schlesinger said, are reliant on food banks. One way we are ensuring that we protect those most vulnerable is our very progressive scheme around council tax reduction. We recognise how difficult it is that the government force that payment on everyone in our city, so this administration will do all we can to protect them as far as resources allow. We will also continue, Lord Mayor, to work on this city being fair and progressive. Before us in our budget, we've got some really challenging proposals that continue to demand new ways of working. If we want to continue to provide valued, effective and good quality services that our residents deserve, we have to think differently about how we do things and we've got to be more commercial in some of the ways that we work so that we can invest in the city, create those jobs that are so essential and secure those vital services our residents rely upon. Our capital programme, Lord Mayor, continues to invest money in the city. It's extremely good news, it creates jobs and we continue to deliver that effectively, although as some colleagues have pointed out, not necessarily in the timing, in the way that we want to do it, but the funding is there and secure. Lord Mayor, just to also place on record members of scrutiny who contribute to the proposals that are before us today, but we are tonight agreeing £13.3 million in cuts on a spend of over £228 million and we are building on successfully delivering savings over recent years. We don't have a magic money tree. If I can just turn to the amendments, which I think as some of my colleagues say are today's headlines and tomorrow's fish and chip wrappers, that use of one-off airport dividend funding potentially leading to revenue spending in the future will not work. Highway funding is not just sharing out the money across the city. That is not a fair way to do it. That does not reflect on need. And actually, colleagues talked about the litter bins proposals in the amendments. We did consult really widely on the litter bins proposals. All members were engaged in that. All members have been offered the opportunity to be involved in that review. The proposals, the amendments before us, Lord Mayor, are opportunistic, short-term solutions for long-term problems that the Lib Dems accept no responsibility for in terms of propping up the Tories in coalition. Lord Mayor, this Labour administration will continue to use reserves effectively to help us make changes to the way we do things for the future. We will not use them as a one-off way of protecting services and postponing those difficult decisions. Lord Mayor, the cumulative impact assessment, which is before us in the papers tonight, identifies openly, transparently and honestly the impact of the cuts that have been forced on us, yes councillor Faulkner, by both government cuts and increased need across the city, but we continue to be open and transparent in all that we do to flag up those issues. We continue to live in a great city and in the face of austerity, we will continue to promote that and be ambitious for our future. Lord Mayor, the opposition are out of touch, out of ideas, out of step, out of steam and if they think that what using one-off funding to protect services works, their proposals do not even get us out of the woods. We are transforming services radically. The opposition want to keep going without thought or a proper plan for the longer term. I commend the budget to council for agreement, albeit, Lord Mayor, with a heavy heart, and ask council to reject the amendments. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Can I now call on councillor Forbes to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd like to start off by thanking the officers who've worked on the budget, Tony Kirkham, Mark Nicholson and Kirsty Williams Wilkinson, the Cabinet and Directors team and above all, my group, who have spent many hours in going through the detailed proposals in front of us, amending them, proposing alternatives and working through the detail. This is a collective effort and it's one which I think represents what we believe the best representation of our values in action in the city, given the resources that we have available to us. And I can't help but sit in the council chamber tonight and I'm taken back to my teenage years when I used to go round to my grandma's to watch a programme called Waiting for God, which was about a group of people, elderly people, living in the past, reliving their glory days, sniping at anybody who went past and generally being rather unpleasant. And we've had quite a few auditions for the role of Tom and Diana in the council chamber here tonight from some of the members opposite, because it's an uncomfortable truth that they just can't swallow. They can't accept and can't admit to the fact that they were complicit in the biggest austerity programme that this country has seen in the post-war period. They cannot accept the uncomfortable truth that not only were they part of that government, they enthusiastically supported not only the overall austerity programme, which was led by Danny Alexander, the Chief Secretary to the Treasury through the Comprehensive Spending Review, but also... Review, but also they supported the deeply unfair local government formula that was in place between 2010 and 2015, which gave us the majority of the cuts which make up the cumulative impact that we're talking about tonight. It was actually Greg Clark, when he was appointed secretary state in 2015, that amended the formula to actually make it less unfair to places like Newcastle. So the unfairness lies predominantly in the coalition period of government between 2010 and 2015 and the Lib Dems cannot admit that and we will never let them forget that. And what we've heard tonight, Lord Mayor, is a success story in terms of how this council has responded to these challenges. Yes, there is more money from our local tax base because for the last seven years we have actively invested in growing our tax bases in the city because we could see that we were going to be reliant on them in the future. Yes, we bust a gut to build more homes, not just to make sure that we have decent places for people to live, but because we knew that the council was going to be more reliant on council tax income in the future. Yes, we bust a gut to get more people into work and create jobs and get businesses setting up here and growing here because that's good for our economy, it's good for people in work, but it's also good for the business rate retention that we have too. And we've also not only taken difficult decisions about things that we've reduced, but we've predominantly focused on where we can transform services, doing things in different ways. And I want to pay tribute to the staff working for this organisation, who have responded to that change magnificently and who, as so many people have said in the chamber tonight, continue to go that extra mile, make that extra effort to make a real difference to people's lives. We've seen that in the last week, but that is a visible representation of what staff in this organisation do, week in, week out, year in, year out. They've not been cowed by austerity, they've risen to the challenge and I'm immensely proud of what they've achieved. And what we have above all in the council chamber tonight is financial illiteracy from the opposition against a very carefully thought-through and well-balanced set of proposals from this side of the chamber. The only point of contention, despite all of the hypocritical hand-wringing about why is this happening or why isn't that happening and why have we not saying more about care services, the only point of contention tonight is about the use of the airport dividend and here we have a clear choice. We are proposing to use it like a capital receipt as a one-off set of funds which will lead to improvements in play areas. What the opposition party are seeking to do are propose amendments to the revenue budget, which would be time-consuming to implement, difficult in terms of the staffing complications and implications, and they have no plan of what they would do a year on after that. So their sums simply create a 1.2 million black hole for 2019-20. We will have to remember to remind them of that when we have this debate next year. And above all, Lord Mayor, many members have talked about the importance of communities in this city tonight and our communities do an extraordinary job. Councillor Schlesinger, councillor Jackie Schlesinger, referred to the West End Food Bank and I'm immensely proud that we have an organisation like that in the city. I'm also immensely saddened that we have to have an organisation like that in the city. And I want to pay tribute to my colleagues, some of whom are in the council chamber tonight and some of whom aren't, who led the fundraising challenge over Christmas period to raise £50,000 for the food bank to support its valuable work. And the only reason we have a food bank, the biggest food bank in England in this city, is because of the aggressive universal credit system that was introduced in the coalition government and has been furthered by this Tory government. So we are, as a city, showing our ability to respond to the challenges. We don't want to have to respond to those challenges, but we are and that's what leadership is about. What this budget, Lord Mayor, does is set out a clear vision for the future of our city, a clear vision for the future of our public services, despite the cumulative loss of £283 million by the end of this decade. It sets out how we're going to deal with these challenges in the future. It sets out the direction of travel so that people may know, it may be uncomfortable, but at least they know what the future will hold for them. Councils have to set balanced budgets every year, unlike central government departments, and we are showing on this side of the chamber prudent, judicious and effective management of the public resources that are entrusted to us in the leadership of this council. This budget, Lord Mayor, is not one that any of us would wish to write if we were starting from scratch, but I think it plays our hand within the values of fairness and social justice in the best way possible in the interests of this city, not just for the next year but for the long term. And I hope that people will therefore reject the silly headline-grabbing amendments from the Lib Dems and support the overall budget here tonight and then we can get on with the important job of delivering for our communities.
Thank you councillor Forbes. We will now move to a named vote on each of the amendments in turn. Can you please ensure you are in your allocated seat? Could we ring the bell, please? There we go. So the first thing we vote on is amendment one. Amendment one is lost, 41 votes against, 20 in favour. Can we now move on to amendment two? Yeah, I am. Projector's failed. We're just waiting for the projector, that's failed. Right. So shall we do the next one as a standing vote? Right, okay. It's going to take about three minutes to get it sorted, so we'll just hang on, if that's okay. Ladies and gentlemen, while we're waiting for the projector to get sorted out, the guillotine has fallen, so in the meantime, we'll take the rest of the business, if that's acceptable to the council. So we'll move on to the statement of licensing policy. This has to be agreed tonight. Councillor Kemp?
It's agreed.
It's agreed? Is it seconded?
Please on record, thanks for all the stuff.
Okay. Yes. Yeah. Okay, thank you councillor Lewis, that will happen. Questions by members? We've received four questions, mark for written reply. These were the responses that have been circulated and displayed in the foyer. Appointments, is the appointment agreed, are set out?
Agreed.
Okay. Notice of motion, councillor Strether. Do you want to deal with it tonight or do you want to hold it back to next month? Deal with it tonight? Can I have it, do you propose, could you propose the motion? Seconded by councillor Allison. This amendment, councillor Huddard, do you want to move the amendment? You just have to move it, you can't speak on it.
Yeah, I did want to move the amendments, but you're intending it's friendly.
Okay, thank you. Seconded, councillor Shepherd.
Seconded, Lord Mayor.
Okay. Is the amendment agreed?
Agreed.
No?
I still dispute.
Can we just stand? Who's against the amendment? Thank you. Can we count them? Can you stand? So we all, I think it's every member of the Labour group, isn't it? So we're at 41? Oh, we're back. Well, we may as well take the vote on this while, can you press your buttons? If you, we're voting for the amendment. Oh, it's still not working, it hasn't been cleared. I'll tell you in a moment. Right, can we clear the, can we reset? Fingers crossed. Right, we're going to vote on the amendment for the notice of motion housing. Can we do that? So the amendments, it's not finished, I better, hang on. So the amendment is lost, can we now vote on the substantive? Agreed? Okay, that's fine. Right, we'll go back to the budget amendments and we're now voting on amendment two. So that amendment has fallen, 20 in favour and 40 against. So we now need to move on to amendment three. So amendment three has fallen, 24, 41 against. So could we now move on to amendment four? That amendment has also fallen, 20 in favour, 41 against. So the last amendment, amendment five. That amendment has also fallen, 20 in favour, 41 against. Could we now vote on the substantive? Motion, please. That motion is carried, 41 for, 18 abstentions and two against. Right, ladies and gentlemen, I just, sorry? Okay. Right, before I close the meeting, can I remind members that tomorrow is International Women's Day and I hope to see many of my female colleagues in exhibition park for the five k, well, walk, cycle, race, it'll be walk in my case, but I hope to see as many as possible there. And just to advise that the next meeting of council is the last meeting of the municipal year and will be held on Wednesday 4th of April. And last but not least, the book it's been on holiday but it's back tonight, so if you'd like to put some loose change in it, we'd be gratefully excited. So thank you very much, everyone, and good night.